Everyone, I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Ms. Roski.
Here.
Ms. Kaski.
Present.
Ms. Nedke.
Present.
Present.
Ms. Giannis and Mrs. Yer.
Okay, thank you, Council. We need a present. I missed it. I don't know what happened. Are we all here?
I'm here.
Roll call's done. Mrs. Zarco's here. Got it.
Got it. I didn't hear you call my name because I just heard you call Henry.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, it's gonna be one of those nights.
Six of us are here.
We have a quorum.
Some from more than others.
Three of us are wearing masks due to a recent exposure to somebody who may potentially have COVID. Mr. Giannis is not here, and you can judge whether the two are related. Council, we do need approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Kaski.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This is a special city council meeting. This is part of our budget workshops. We are going to be talking tonight about police, fire, community relations, public works, and water and sewer. And for tonight's discussion, I will turn it over to our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Like the first hearing, we have a number of presentations planned this evening, and then afterward, of course, there'll be plenty of time for council feedback and comments from the audience. Budget and Finance Director Jennifer Varney will begin the financial overview, as she did before, with the budgets under consideration this evening. She will then be followed by the Police Chief, the Public Works Director and Fire Chief, who will highlight noteworthy projects in their proposed budgets. So please be reminded that any budget amendments need to be made this evening so that they can be incorporated into the final budget adoption, which is May 4, and that is a Wednesday due to the, next Wednesday, due to the Warren Consolidated School Bond Proposal Election. So Mayor, at this point, I'm pleased to introduce Budget and Finance Director Jennifer Varney to start us off this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Kachubski, and members of Council. Tonight, we will continue our budget workshop, including discussion of the four general fund departments: police, fire, community relations, and public works, and also the Water and Sewer Fund. As a reminder, the proposed general fund budget totals $117.2 million. First up tonight is the Police Department, which is the largest department totaling 34% of the general fund budget. The department has 215 employees in four divisions, and the budget totals $39.9 million, and over 90% of the budget is personnel costs. The total budget increased this year by $750,000 or just under 2%. Personnel costs increased about $1 million due to contractual wage adjustments, the addition of a deputy police chief, and the conversion of a part-time animal control officer to full-time, and these increases were offset by reductions in the contributions to the pension and retiring medical plans. The budget also includes the continuation of the core movie night and the purchase of flat cameras for use in criminal investigations. Now, the flat cameras are actually proposed to be purchased with forfeiture funds. Highlights from the capital budget include the replacement of seven investigative vehicles and 10 traffic and patrol vehicles, the continuation of a multi-year replacement projects for handheld speed measuring equipment, in-car computers and modems, and ballistic helmets. A second security gate is proposed to be installed in the parking lot behind the police station. An additional truenarc analyzer and replacement tasers are proposed to be funded using forfeiture funds. The Fire Department budget totals $24.3 million and represents 21% of the total general fund budget, and this department has three divisions. The budget proposal includes 110 full-time and five part-time positions. The total budget increased $790,000 or 3.4%. Personnel costs accounted for the majority of the increase and is due to contractual wage increases and the addition of two part-time inspectors and a part-time account clerk in fire prevention. The bulk budget also includes additional training for firefighters and officers and funds for the development of a strategic plan. Capital highlights include the replacement of a 25-year-old fire engine and two replacement chassis for ambulances. The replacement of the five remaining diesel exhaust systems and the continuation of replacement plans for air packs and cardiac monitors are also proposed, as well as the beginning of a multi-year plan to replace turnout gear. Next is Community Relations, which totals $1.8 million and equates to about 1% of the general fund budget. The department includes eight full-time and two part-time positions. The Community Relations budget increased about $100,000 or 6%, primarily due to the return of a traditional Sterling Fest. Funds are also included for equipment for a podcast studio and for public art. The final general fund department is the Department of Public Works, which totals $11.6 million and includes refuse costs of $4.8 million. Public Works consists of four divisions with 34 full-time and 17 part-time employees. The Public Works budget increased 2.3% or $127,000. Fuel costs increased significantly due to higher gas prices. This was partially offset by the one-time cost of a fleet study in the current year. Capital purchases for this department include the replacement of a 20-year-old wood chipper, a 22-year-old tandem axle dump truck, three pickup trucks with plows, and a replacement printer for the sign shop. Last for tonight is the Water and Sewer Fund, which totals $59.3 million, and that's 23% of the total fund budget. This fund includes three divisions with 39 full-time and 10 part-time employees. Over 76%, about $45 million of the costs in Water and Sewer Fund are controlled by the Great Lakes Water Authority and Macomb County Public Works. Over $38 million or 84% of those costs are fixed, which means these costs are incurred regardless of how much water is used. Expenses in the Water and Sewer Fund increased $2.4 million or 4.2%. Personnel costs increased $200,000 due to contractual wage adjustments. The cost of water from the GLWA increased about 3.4% this year, and the cost of sewer from Macomb County increased by 2.2%. And the debt service on the bonds that will be issued Thursday for the water meter replacement project is also included. The capital budget includes the replacement of a stake truck, a tandem axle dump truck, three pickup trucks, and a backhoe loader, and of course, the water meter replacement project will also continue. The proposed budget includes a rate increase of 5%, which covers the increased costs and includes an estimated increase in fund balance of $750,000. This increase will cost the average homeowner about $3 per month. And as you can see here, even with our new monthly rate, and we're comparing it to last year's rates of our surrounding communities, we will still have one of the lowest, if not the lowest, rates of our surrounding communities. And we are making progress on strengthening our Water and Sewer Fund balance, but weather is a very big factor. The summer of 2020 was very dry and caused fund balance to increase significantly in fiscal year '21. The exact opposite happened this past summer, which was a very wet summer, and for the current year, we're estimating an operating loss of $2.9 million due to much less water usage. But between these two years, it basic, they basically offset each other. So assuming normal weather and a 4% to 5% annual increases, we should meet our goal of 25% by 2026. More good news for residents. Starting this spring, we will begin the transition to monthly billing for all residential customers. Beginning May 1, which is coming up soon, customers will receive a flyer in their quarterly bill that will explain how this transition will work, which will be slightly different depending on which, which cycle your household is in. Regardless of the billing cycle, the August 1 bill and forward will be monthly for all customers. Monthly billing will improve customer experience by creating smaller bills that will help with budgeting and managing water usage. And don't forget to visit our website to sign up for auto pay, paperless billing, and budget billing to make your life even easier. Finally, tonight, at the request of Councilman Radke, a budget amendment has been prepared to increase the general fund budget by $300,000 to fund a complete update of the city zoning ordinance. This and any additional budget amendments should be voted on tonight for incorporation into the, to the final budget that will be adopted at the May 4 city council meeting. That concludes my overview of the proposed budget, and I will turn it back over to Mr. Vanderpoel.
And Mayor, continuing on, our next presentation involves the Police Department. And as you know, the Police Department has made great use of technology, helping to keep Sterling Heights one of the safest communities in the nation. In fact, over the last few days, we heard about a tragedy involving an elderly couple in Sterling Heights. Knowing the husband had a gun, the officers sent in a very small drone into the house, and they could literally fly the drone through the house to ensure that it was safe for officers to enter. This is one of many technological advancements that has been made in the Police Department, protecting not only police officers but the general public. And so I'm pleased to introduce the Police Chief, who's now going to walk us through some projects and initiatives set forth in the Police Department proposed budget.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, members of city council. Tonight, I'd like to present the 2022-23 Police Department Budget Review. I'll be covering several things, including a couple of technology features. As Mr. Vanderpoel noted, technology has helped us get a lot more done, and one of those projects is Flock Safety License Plate Reader Program. The LICA Laser Scanner, very interesting tool that we've been using lately, and I'd like to highlight that tonight, and the proposal for a new rank of Deputy Chief. Flock License Plate Reader Technology, a lot of you have heard the term LPR or ALPR. It stands for License Plate Reader or Automatic or Automated License Plate Reader. It's a small battery or AC-powered camera, and as you can see in the picture there, that is the camera itself. Slightly bigger than a cellphone, it runs on a battery that's a solar charging panel that's above it, and the proposal for this system would be 22 cameras placed throughout the city for maximum coverage. The cameras have a cellular data connection built right into it. Any pictures taken of license plates with the system goes directly to the cloud from the camera. It alerts police when wanted vehicles enter Sterling Heights, which is proactive enforcement. We literally would have that alert put out on every single car as a wanted car was in our city, and also use to solve crimes. After a crime is committed, we could pull plates in a certain area, and that's reactive policing. So it solves a lot of problems, adheres to all state laws, and these cameras run $2,500 each installed. What data is captured? Whenever you talk about license plate readers and more cameras, people get suspicious, but this program is up and running throughout the United States. California is one of the first states to get really heavily invested in license plate readers, and now it's in Michigan in a big way. And you can see on the right is an actual picture taken from one of the license plate cameras, and what it gathers is vehicle details and the license plate of the car. It's indiscriminate evidence based from fixed locations. No people are photographed, no facial recognition is used, no traffic enforcement is done with these cameras. The camera uses a color lens and an infrared lens to catcher, to capture plates even in total darkness at speeds of 100 miles an hour. It can capture a plate on a car driving by the camera at 100 miles an hour. And on the right there, you can see it captured a Texas plate with the tag number. They know, this software knows it's a Toyota. They know it's gray. They know the last time it was in the city was 3:15 p.m., and it's been in our city three out of the last 30 days. That would be a typical report when you entered a license plate. That's what you'd get back. It's all about keeping Sterling Heights safe. We talked about proactive enforcement, real-time alerts when stolen or wanted cars enter the city. So if a car is stolen, or we put in a plate of some car we're looking for, attempt homicide, every officer that's on the road logged into Flock, their computer would make an alarm sound. It would say, "This car is at 15 and Dodge Park," with an exact GPS location within seconds of that car going by that license plate reader. That is proactive enforcement. Investigative. If a crime was committed in a certain area of the city, we could pull up all the cameras, and we would know exactly what vehicles traveled in and around that area around the time of the crime. And Flock cameras act as a deterrent, and I'm convinced the last five or six years here in Sterling Heights with every other community, the, the vast increase in cameras, doorbell cameras, Ring cameras, everyone's got a camera in their house. Every time we have a crime in a neighborhood, we go door-to-door, and we gather that data, and it has paid dividends for us. And the bad guys know this. That's why the porch pirating of packages has really decreased, because everyone's got a camera. We're catching those people doing those crimes. This is yet another step in, don't do it because you're going to get caught. And I do believe that the Flock cameras will act as a deterrent. And homeowner associations, hotels, motels, commercial properties can install their own LPR technology and allow the police to have access to those cameras as well. This is not new in Sterling Heights. If you didn't know, in 2012, we had a license plate reader camera program. We had one car outfitted just like you see in that picture. The car had four cameras mounted to the roof, and it would drive around the city collecting license plates. The problem is you had one car, and if that car wasn't in service, or broke, or down, you weren't getting license plates. So Sterling Heights was one community, we had one car. Six other agencies had one car. It just didn't work, having one car driving around the city. So the data was terrible going into it. The cars were breaking, and we've now moved to stationary cameras on poles, much more accurate, and the data is phenomenal. Local departments that are just recently signed on with Flock, which is just a single company that does license plate cameras, but Detroit, Warren, Chesterfield, Macomb County Sheriff, Oakland County Sheriff, Roseville, New Baltimore, Madison Heights, Hazel Park, Southfield, Waterford, Farmington Hills, and many others across the state have signed on with Flock. And the, the pro of being on the same platform is with Warren's cameras up and running, Warren will give us access to their database, so we can type in a plate, and we know Warren had that car at 12 in Van Dyke last week. Warren will also have access to our system. So departments are using the same platform because it allows data transfer as opposed to going to a completely different program or software base, and Flock has been the camera choice locally. And it's not just crime. This, this is a real case in Shambly, Georgia. It was this child in this picture was abducted. The Amber Alert was issued at 12:33 p.m. Within 30 minutes, they started looking at their Flock cameras. An hour and a half later, the suspect vehicle was located, and by 5 o'clock that day, a felony stop was placed on that car. Baby was reunited with mother by 6 o'clock p.m. So it's not just about crime. It's anything that happens in our city, and we have a good or valid license plate. We can put it in the system, and not only here in Sterling Heights, but all those other communities that have the cameras, we know where this car is heading. This is another case right here, Kalamazoo, Michigan. Just last year, installed 35 license plate reader cameras, intended to address the rising violent crime in the city. After one month, the camera system helped identify suspects in a road rage incident. By October, Flock License Plate Reader Technology helped Kalamazoo solve three homicide cases, and by the end of August, they have, Kalamazoo Police recovered 57 stolen cars, an average of two a day. And on the private side, this is right here in Warren, Michigan. Warren Manor's apartment complex in Warren, after months of increased violent crime, including shooting, including shootings, assaults, and arsons, the property manager installed a Flock License Plate Reader camera. Within the first two weeks of deployment, Warren was able to identify the suspects in a break-in and entering case, and this was done by searching by the make and model of the suspect vehicle. So that's a local case on a private installation. Before you go live with any license plate reader technology, you have to let the residents know what you're buying and how it's going to be rolled out. We're going to be very transparent with this program. On the left is Morgan Hill, California's website, and it lists everything there is to know about their license plate reader program. How many cameras, what they're used for, our policies, our training, everything is going to be completely publicly accessible. The data is only held in our system for 30 days, and then it's purged. There is no live video taken with these cameras. The license plate data is owned by Sterling Heights, and it's not sold to third-party vendors. It's completely encrypted from the time the picture's taken to the time it hits the cloud and back to our officers that are using the system. Officers must have an official law enforcement purpose to access stored data. You cannot just turn on the camera system and go into the database and search any plate. Just like Lean, when you run a plate in a car, you have to have a legal law enforcement purpose, and if you don't, you could be disciplined up to, including termination, for inappropriately using this database. All officers would receive training on the license plate reader technology and the policy before the cameras are deployed, and like I said again, the transparency dashboard will be added to our website before going live. Moving on to our laser scanner, this is a little bit of new technology that you on council approved for us last year, so thank you very much. This is state-of-the-art. It's called a laser scanner, and it goes on a tripod, and you're seeing the top of the laser scanner. Fascinating technology that we use all the time here in Sterling Heights. Talk about cutting edge. That laser scanner produces high-quality digital scans of the surrounding environment. It does 3D modeling of the entire scene, crash scene or crime scene. One scan takes about a minute and 50 seconds, and then the officer picks up the scanner, and they move it around the crime scene so they can paint that entire scene with a scanned image. Very precise measurements, and at the end of it, you can fly through the scene. You could show it to a jury or in court and use that digital presence. What do we use it for? We use it for severe injuries, fatal car crashes, homicide investigations, and fire and arson investigations. On the left is our old tool. It's called the Total Station. It's a land surveying equipment. You've seen this before on the side of the road, right? The guy holding the pole and the other guy looking through the device. What they're really doing is they're shooting points. How many feet away, when they do in a fatal crash, we would have to move that pole up to 1,000 times after a fatal crash. I know I was in traffic for many years, and you had to take at least, you know, 500 to 1,000 points, and every point, the guy would have to move the pole, the guy would look through the lens, take a shot, and they'd get the exact measurement. It would take hours. The one on the right is the laser scanner. That laser scanner spins in a circle and rotates. It takes millions upon millions of points of data within a minute and 50 seconds. Ridiculous, the, the quality of the laser scan. Who's trained? Every single one of our evidence technicians is trained in this, and all members of our traffic division. So that's 22 members know how to operate this equipment, and they also know how to operate the software on the backend. Here's an image. This is a scanned image. It's a color overlay of a scanned image. So it looks like a picture to you, but behind this picture is millions and millions of points of data. We simply drew a line from the front tire of the front police car to the rear bumper of the back police car. We can click anywhere on the picture, and down to the millimeter, we know those distances even long after we're cleared from the scene. And in this case, we know the distance there is 12.086 meters. So it looks like a picture, but it's not really a picture. It's millions of points of data that we can measure skid marks, trace evidence, well after the scene has been cleared. This is a fly-through. So you know, we had a couple cars stolen up in Romeo a while back, and then led police on a high-speed chase down the Van Dyke Expressway. It ended up in a fatal accident on Van Dyke at a 15-hour road. This is a laser scan after the scene. Everything you see in this picture is not a photograph. It is literally millions upon millions of points of data after this crash happened. I'm going to play this video for you now. We can measure anything in this picture, down to the millimeter. Skid marks, yaw marks, trace evidence is all collected. That's the laser scanner in its caring case before deployment. And moving on to the addition of a Deputy Chief rank, as you know, right now, we do not have a Deputy Chief rank. If we were to add one, the Deputy Chief would report directly to me and oversee the Police Administration Division, Police Operations, Investigations, and Support Services. And the question is, why do you need a Deputy Chief rank? And it's, it's easy. It's continuous improvement. What we've done here in Sterling Heights the last five years, I'm very proud of every single program, every new initiative. The list on the left is literally the programs that have been started in the last five years, 12 different things that we have done. But with increased responsibility, takes increased management, increased oversight, and increased work, to say the least. The core program, which you know has been increasingly successful. We now use these core officers for not only public outreach programs, but the endless amount of neighborhood problems and neighbor issues. We send these core officers out there every single day to address those problems. Our Smart Moves program, which hopefully, now that COVID is in the rearview mirror, will be starting again this fall. All 19 elementary schools in the city get this program. That's 1,500 kids a year graduating from this program. Our Citizens Police Academy, we run two academies every single year, 20 to 25 students per academy session. We have a waiting list on every single Citizen Police Academy. Our Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition, several members of our city council, our city attorney is on the Sterling Heights Drug Free Coalition, providing our residents outreach, support, education, and training with substance use disorder. And the left picture there is one of our Black Balloon Events, and we have another whole list of programming that the Drug Free Coalition is ready to roll out. Very proud of that group and the work they've been doing. This is the Opiate Quick Response Team, the QRT team, again, one of the first in the state of Michigan to make house calls. If someone overdoses, a police officer, a family recovery coach, a peer recovery coach, show up on the doorstep, and our mission is to get that person into treatment and get them help before they kill themselves and cause more problems within the family. This brand-new program, we're literally still trying to figure out how to run it. It's called the Redirect. The Families Against Narcotics, working with the County Prosecutor's Office, received a $1.2 million grant, and we're going to be really looking at how we do policing here in Sterling Heights for simple possession charges. If someone's got a drug problem, putting him in the county jail for 30 days is not going to fix the drug problem. We've even seen a, a huge increase in shoplifting complaints, and we have people with 10, 15, 20 arrests for shoplifting. They're not serving time on these. Going to jail is not going to fix- They're not serving time on these, going to jail is not going to fix it because there's an underlying drug problem in almost every single one of these cases. So the answer, the question is, what are you doing to stop it? And the answer is treatment, support, and that takes time, it takes energy, so Redirect is going to help our officers find a better solution than throwing someone in the county jail for 30 days and getting that person the help they need. This is another program that council graciously allowed us to hire another officer to join a brand-new federal anti-narcotics team of Macomb, that's the Phantom Drug Team. We started this with the city of Warren, we now have six agencies with us on the Task Force Group 10, and I'm proud to say it's made some big dividends. We are one of the highest-producing drug units in the DEA. You can see the list of confiscated drugs from this group last year, well over $6 million worth of drugs taken off the streets, $1 million in forfeited funds, $44,000 in other assets, and that team has been exceedingly good at what they do. Our recruitment team, brand-new, never had one before, we do now. Six officers travel the state of Michigan. The picture on the left is our officers at Ferris State University recruiting and selling the message about how great it is to be a cop here in Sterling Heights. There's Officer Kishat on the right-hand side, promoting a career day at the CalDian Foundation. We are everywhere in the state and has paid huge dividends. We had 100 people apply to our department last fall, easily more than any agency around us, and 76 people ended up on our final hiring list, and that's a direct reflection of these officers' recruitment efforts and the work they've been doing. And then one of another big initiative ours is our city social worker, right? One of the first big cities in the state of Michigan to hire a full-time dedicated social worker to address complex issues involving physical and mental health issues. I know many members of council have had a chance to meet Amy and pass along problems and concerns with residents in the city, from hoarding to mental health issues. Our social worker has done phenomenal work since we've hired her last fall. I'm hoping she doesn't get too busy because she has a full load of cases, and she's done a great job and really served the city well. This is our new direct-to-petrol unit. As you know, we're hiring seven brand-new police officers, I'm going to get to that in a minute about how we're paying for that, but seven brand-new police officers coming to Sterling Heights this summer, so excited about this. Five of those officers are going to be a part of our new direct-to-petrol unit that we do not have, but we will have by the summer. They'll focus on hotspot crime in the city, the unit will target a variety of criminal and quality-of-life concerns, including residential and commercial crime, speeding issues, and nuisance complaints. And we expect this unit to be up and running by June, because I have, we've hired so many new officers, you have to get them hired and get them through 17 weeks of training before I can pull them off the road. So I don't want to leave the road guys short, so we have to let them finish the FTO process, and then we'll have these guys ready to go by June. Another two officers that we're bringing onboard is going to be assigned to the Community Services Unit, which right now is a unit of one person, Sergeant Susal, he's a one-man unit. He's going to finally have some help and support. We're going to have two full-time officers added to the Community Service Unit focusing on community policing, public outreach, neighborhood parks, and educational programs, and our middle schools and high schools, and we're going to have those two guys, or gals, assigned by July of this year. And finally, the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police accreditation, as you know, we became one of the largest cities in the state of Michigan, become fully certified last summer, very proud of that accomplishment, and serves us well every single day with our updated policies and procedures. So the question is, we're doing more with more, with more people, and we're doing it responsibly. The seven officers that we are hiring, that was all done by closing our in-house jail facility. We saved $700,000 by taking our prisoners directly to Macomb County Sheriff's Department. With that savings, we're able to hire seven brand-new officers to serve our residents every single day, so very proud of that. And a lot of officers in the 41A District Court, the Macomb County Sheriff's Department, there was a lot of work to get that done, and we did, and the beneficiaries are the residents. They're going to have the extra officers out there. But again, to recap about the deputy chief and the need for a deputy chief in this extra layer of management, is the number of departments or programs that we've had, expanded accreditation, we are accredited, but that's step one. Every single year, we have to send in proofs that we're doing our work, there's about 100 of them we have to send in on an annual basis, and then every three years, we have to be fully recertified again. So that's an ongoing piece of work that's just never done. As you know, the 2020 Manpower Study highlighted the need for a deputy chief, and my participation in, the city has so many new groups, wonderful groups, doing some great work, but again, that pulls me away from other work at the police department, like the African-American Coalition, Community Alliance, the Clergy Forum, the DEI Advisory Board. And finally, the deputy chief rank has been utilized in many similar-sized cities across Michigan, including Warren, Shelby Township, Livonia, Taylor, Southfield, Roseville, and Grand Rapids. And with that, that completes my budget review.
And Mayor, continuing on, as you can see, there's a lot going on in the police department, and including the fire department. So like the police department, the Sterling Heights Fire Department is renowned for providing outstanding services to businesses and residents alike. The Sterling Heights Fire Department is highly rated, as you well know, by the Insurance Services Organization. Our department has a Class II rating, one of the best in the state. And now Chief Edmund will highlight the initiatives being recommended to protect property and keep individuals safe, which of course is a core mission of the fire department, so I'm pleased to introduce Chief Edmund.
Good evening, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mayor Taylor, and members of council. I'm honored here tonight to present to you the 2022-23 budget overview for the fire Your fire department, I'm very privileged to lead the men and women of this department. Our members are very committed to excellence, and the development through this commitment can be seen in the training, in the public education events that we hold on a regular basis. We maintain this training to make sure that we provide the best care for our residents and visitors of Sterling Heights. We are in the top 1% of Michigan fire departments, 82% of our incidents are responded to in five minutes. We talked to you last year about accreditation, and some of the steps that, to move us towards accreditation involves doing a strategic planning document, so that's one thing that's included in this year's budget, to have a consultant lead us through this process so we can continue it on going forward. The other thing that we plan to do next year is a standard of cover. This will let us judge our deployment of resources based on the risks that we assume in the city. So the five-year strategic plan, the goals of this strategic plan is to create a shared vision of sustainable and a diverse organization capable of preventing, responding, and mitigating emergencies. It's going to be community-driven, with input from the residents, from the department members, from city management, and from council. This will help us to maintain a stable, stability and diversity in our organization. It will also develop a living document that we hope will be evaluated every year as we go forward, and at the end of that five years, repeat the process. The training requirements, training has always been very important to our organization to maintain our level of service at a premier level. Some of the rules for Michigan have changed recently, and all the certification levels that you see up on the screen now require continued education, and there's also more education for the fire officer at this time. So some of the training requirements, due to the upcoming retirements, we need additional funds to develop our staff to make sure we continue this succession planning with retirement of Assistant Chief Miller, potential battalion chief retirement in the next couple of years, lieutenants, and also fire inspectors. One of the things that we've done recently is we've moved the battalion chiefs from Station 5 to Station 1. This is going to improve our incident management. By moving the battalion chiefs to Station 1, as you can see on the screen, it allows us to cover a bigger area within five minutes. When we start our initial incident management system with our company officers, they're responsible for doing the task levels at the scene and also managing the incident. By allowing the B.C. to arrive a little bit sooner, it takes that load off of that incident management to a person who's in a stationary position inside a vehicle that has all the documents that he needs to continue that service. Some of the improvements that we need to do is some of our stations are seeing some wear and tear, specifically Station 1. And over the past couple of years, we've invested a lot of funds into Station 1, we've redone the HVAC system to make sure that there's a cooling environment there, and we're spending about $25,000 this year to do some of the work, and then we're asking for additional funds to complete Phase 2 of the project in the upcoming year. Some of the other station improvements, Station 5, which was built in 1992, is in need of some TLC. We're going to replace the HVAC units this year. Previous years, prior to my arrival here, we spent some money in redoing the wallpaper and fire administration side and also doing the exercise room. And then we're going to use some of our facility funds in this upcoming year to redo some carpet spaces in the front offices of the 56-hour side. One of the things that you've, that council has approved in the past is the replacement of the parking lot behind Station 4, that's currently underway right now. We'll be asking for some additional funds to redo the parking lot of Station 1 in the following year. One of the multi-year projects that we've had go on is the station exhaust capture system. Prior to 2017, we didn't have a station exhaust system in the base that now houses the ambulances, so we're adding that to this year's budget to make sure that we have the diesel exhaust to cut down on the cancer-causing agents that the firefighters are exposed to. One of the things that we're working on and constantly trying to improve is the Fire Prevention Division through process improvements. Our current staff is one fire marshal, four fire inspectors, and we have a firefighter specialist who spends 25% of his times on plan review and 75% on EMS review for quality control to make sure that we have the appropriate billing. This current year, we have conducted about 1,424 inspections, and we anticipate being at about 2,136 by the end of this fiscal year. As you can see in the previous years, this was an amount of inspections we did. There's been a little bit of a drop, and you'll see that in the next slide with the businesses that we touched it. Part of that was through COVID and also the illegal marijuana grows that we had to deal with. All right, so the business inspections, we touched 336 businesses to date, we have 504 that we anticipate with the scheduled inspections coming up, and those are the numbers for the last two years. Like I said previously, our main focus over the last year was marijuana grows, and now we've been able to hand that off to code enforcement and more concentrate on our specialized area of actually the fire inspections. Well, one of the things that we did implement, it was halfway through this fiscal year in October, is Mobilize Inspection Program, and this allows the inspectors to actually do inspections remotely through a tablet and upload those documents. They can take pictures of code problems, it also gives us kind of a daily view of what's going on. You can see in this particular area right here, this is our upcoming schedule things, and we have 558 inspections scheduled before the end of the fiscal year. Part of the project with Safe Streets, it allowed us to invest in continuous capital improvements in the fire department. We are looking right now and researching vendors to remount our ambulances, and Station 5's ambulance will be the first one that gets remounted. Also with council support, last year, we replaced a frontline engine that was 15 years of service at Station 5, and we are seeking funds to replace the frontline engine at Station 3. By the time that we actually receive the new vehicle, it'll be 16 years frontline. This allows us to take out two of the vehicles and remove them for service that are over 20 years of age. One of the projects that you've approved in the past is the SCBAs. This will be our last year of this project, we are asking to complete 16 packs, and that will conclude this one. The other one is the life packs. Right now, we have two current monitors that will reach their lifespan, and then the newest will be on the transport ambulance. This was a program that was started, a multi-year project, because we had five monitors that were going to reach their end-of-service life in about 2024. So we want to make sure that, and then we put the oldest monitors on the fire engines and the newest ones on the ambulances. Some of the continuing projects that we're doing is we're continually sending people to staff and command at the Eastern Michigan University. Right now, we have one member that's going through that process, and we'll be having another member go next year. This helps us with succession planning, and then we'll continue our efforts now that COVID's died off with CPR to the public. One of the future projects that we're currently working on right now is the idea of maybe a six ambulance during peak time staffing. One of the projects with this is we've been having difficult issues with recruitment, and we're hoping by hiring people at an EMS level and then allowing them to migrate over to the fire department, we'll be able to diversify our department a little bit quicker because we expose ourselves to a larger pool of applicants than what we have right now. So we're just looking for the EMS certification instead of EMS and fire. This would be a peak time staffing unit that would be in service for about 12 hours a day, it'll help with the workload, but the most important part of this is it'll be for us to develop a farm team to lead us into the fire department side of it. And that's my presentation, thank you.
And you can see there's a lot of exciting activities going on in the fire department. I commend the chief and his team for the good work they're doing there. And rounding out the big three is the Department of Public Works, which is responsible for maintaining our streets and rights of way across the city, plowing roads, implementing the refuse and recycling programs, and maintaining over 300 vehicles of varying sizes and forms and so on, everything from a tractor, a motor car vehicle, to a front-end loader and heavy-duty plow trucks. Equally important, DPW ensures our vast network of water and sewer systems are working properly, along with a long list of stormwater detention facilities that keep our city pretty much flood-free during the heavy rains. DPW Director Mike Moore will now highlight some of the many projects proposed in the DPW budget.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel, and good evening to city council, mayor, and the city attorney. Tonight, I'm proud to be before you to discuss the 2022 Department of Public Works annual budget. A couple of the items that I'd like to speak about tonight, I'd like to provide a brief update on our new building, water-meter replacement program, and also talk about some future plans for this upcoming year in regards to hydrant flushing, valve maintenance, and the water system and drain maintenance, as the city manager just mentioned. So in regards to the building update, I thought it might be a good idea to show some photos from before and after our old building to our new building, so maybe it's best we can start with, if you recall, before, we were graciously given the opportunity to seek a new building, this is some of the environment that we had to work through was the sewer catch basins, if you will, and some of our offices, which have now transitioned nicely into more of a professional setting where we absolutely highly more prefer to conduct business in. A really important spot for us is our training room and our multipurpose slash break room. This is our old facility, obviously, with a handful of tables, mind you, we do have roughly 100 employees, so definitely not a good spot to train a group of 100 employees, we would typically have to shut the entire building down and train everyone in the garage, where now we have an area far more conducive to what we're trying to do. As you can see, natural light, two of the large touchscreen TVs that mirror each other, and the high, tall ceilings to give roughly 100 folks at the same time plenty of space to be trained. If we go backwards, this was just one division. This is a quarter of our employees, where we would cram into the room and use the old-school projector, and we did our best, but now, obviously, we've taken it a step ahead. Here's a photo of a recent training we did roughly two weeks ago, and police chief's team did a phenomenal job training our entire department on active shooter and active assailant, and you can see they have everyone's attention, everybody has plenty of space. So we have the ability to hold the entire department there, as well as if we chose to break it down to smaller divisions, or two divisions, you could say in this photo, where this is our mental health awareness training. So this is a really a core value at the DPW that we've been wanting to focus on, that the new building now gives us that opportunity to do. A quick picture of the fleet maintenance area, Mark, excuse me, the city manager had mentioned where all the vehicles are maintained at, the Department of Public Works, you can see in this photograph here, two police, three police vehicles, and maximum two fire engines at the same time, where now, from this photo, it's pretty clear that we can get a lot more vehicles in at the same time. we can get a lot more vehicles in at the same time, thus reducing the downtime for emergency responders and the entire city fleet as a whole. A photo of our old vehicle parking area where we could house a handful of our big trucks for the wintertime, so some pretty tight crowded quarters and parking areas. And keep in mind, this is with the front plows off. So once you put the front plows on the vehicles, it's an additional four feet in front of each vehicle that makes turning radius even tighter. And now angled parking, a lot more natural light, a lot brighter, safer, and easier for staff to navigate. And then lastly, a picture of our frontline snow fleet. Thanks to Community Relations and Dan Rizik, we have a short video to show you. See if we can get this going here, and I can narrate through it. No music, but I can narrate for you. So flying into the fleet maintenance area, and as I had mentioned, plenty of space for everyone to have enough base to work on. This is a Vector truck that has never, we never had the ability to lift before, so now mechanics no longer have to lay on their back. They can lift it in the air. Four fire trucks in the shop at the same time with an additional ambulance. We'll fly outside of the fleet maintenance area, and we'll take a peek into the parking garage. As you can see, some pretty big equipment that is now parked inside, which obviously lengthens the life of every vehicle being out of the sun and the snow and the rest of the elements. Each vehicle does have an assigned spot, and they were all designed specifically, oh, even some front-end loaders here that were always parked outside, backhoes were always parked outside, street sweepers were parked off-site in the winter. Those are now under one roof. So every piece of equipment we have predominantly is now parked inside. Let's take a quick peek into one of the divisional areas. This is obviously the sign shop. These gentlemen here were in some pretty tight quarters before. Now they've got ample space to make the banners, the regulatory signs, some important things. This is our map room. Water and Sewer does a lot of tabletop here with the big scroll prints and maps. And the very popular gym. Morning and afternoon and weekends is packed with employees. And lastly, backup thread admin, a lot of natural light in. That is your brand-new Department of Public Works facility, and we are very appreciative to council for allowing us to have that new building. So thank you. So moving on to the water meter replacement program. As you know, last year, roughly $12 million was approved to replace almost 40,000 meters inside of every residential home and business in the city, and that didn't include just the meter. That was also a transmitter on the outside of the house, and I'm really happy to say the team has done a great job working on this project very quietly with very little disruption. Some quick stats, we are roughly 30% completed with this project. We still have a good target date of July 2023 for the entire project to be completed, and we're now, this slide says 12,400, complete out of 39,000, right about 13,000, just over 13,000 meters. So moving along really well. And as I mentioned, the team's done a great job. The install team, the DPW team, the entire team has done really well. Just a couple appreciation notes here, and folks reaching out to say that the install went well. Everyone was very accommodating to their needs as far as scheduling, so things are moving along well. So a couple technological advances, if you will, that we now have the ability to assist in hopefully reducing residents' water bill. One of those being, we now will have the technology with the new water meters that we can pull a report and look at, I'll really use it. So this is a fictitious graph here, but if I can grab my mouse. Nope, okay. That's okay, I'll walk you through it. So you could see at, say, all the way to the left midnight, let's say a resident calls and says, "My water bill is really high. I am not using that much water." Well, for example, we can pull this one-day report and say, "Well, was anybody using water at midnight up until 7:00 AM?" Because clearly there's usage here. And then we can also advise them of the high or low usage at any time of the day, so in the afternoon. But this will at least help residents pinpoint the potential leak that could be a running toilet, a leaky toilet, a faulty backup sump pump. So again, assisting residents in identifying the possible water loss and thereby reducing their bill. In addition, everyone will now have the ability via a tablet or smartphone to log in, and there's the potential that they could possibly pay their bill this route. However, we do know that everyone can set leak alarms or different set of parameters should you be out of town and there's water usage. It can alert you and let you know that there's consumption in your house so that maybe someone can help you and assist while you're out of town. And as Finance and Budget Director Jennifer Varney mentioned earlier, there's some great news around the corner that soon will be transitioning to monthly billing. So our team's excited to assist everyone to get us there, and we're looking forward to that. Moving forward for this year, one item we want to focus on, the next two items, this being the first, there's some projects we definitely want to focus on, and this would be hydrant flushing. Of the, of the, just over 7,000 fire hydrants in the city, we already flush hydrants, but we really want to take more of a concerted effort this year to flush more throughout the entire community. So why do we flush fire hydrants? Well, number one, for safety reasons. It verifies operations of the fire hydrant should, in an emergency, it needs to be used. Secondly, removes sediment from the water mains over years. Sediment does collect over 20, 30 years in the water mains, so we flush out all that sediment. And we can maintain proper chlorine concentrations in the water. So if you take a look at this picture you see before you, this is Rolling Brook Court, and you could imagine on a court, there isn't that much usage on this line. So essentially, what we would do is open up that hydrant in the center of the island there, and that would draw in fresh water into that entire street, which would then wash out the sediment and keep the chlorine residuals at the appropriate levels. The other item that we want to focus heavily on, that we have been doing a good job in the past, but we want to focus more closely on is valve maintenance. The purpose of a valve is to shut off water so that repairs can be made to the system. Repairs cannot be made to the system while it's live, so we need to shut the water off. A lot of the valves in the underground system are 20, 30, 40, 50 years old. And what you'll see is the bolts on these valves will start to corrode, the seals will start to leak, and you'll have a case like this where, let's say there's a water main break, we can't shut the water off here, so we need to go further down the street to shut the water off, which now affects more folks who won't have water. So here's a lot of what we're seeing, corroded hardware, corroded bolts. So we'll work with a contractor as well as our own team. We'll make confined space entries down into these pits, and we'll start replacing and repairing these valves. So here's a blown-up picture. We use our GIS system, which works very well. We have it out in the field on our iPads. All of our data collection is in this GIS system. So this layer here you see in blue is our water main. And if I go to the next print, it'll clean it up a little bit so I can explain valves a little better. So same print, but I've highlighted where the valves are. So if I go back, here's all of our water main, but here I've highlighted the valves. So let's say, for example, there is a break on the left side of the page on Bangor. Let's call it 14182 Bangor. There's a water main break there. So to shut down the water main properly and make the appropriate repair, we need to go to the south, close that red valve, to the east, close the first red valve, and then to the north up at the corner, we need to close that valve too. Now we can make the repair. However, as I mentioned, if these valves are faulty into the ground, in the ground, we may need to go further down the map, down Bangor, or further down Drumrite to get the water to shut off down that way, therefore affecting that many more residences with no water. So in our world, it's imperative that we're able to shut the water down where it needs to be so there's the minimalist amount of disruption possible for our residents. And then at the end, you have a nice, pretty-looking valve with brand-new hardware that should work flawlessly. And our last topic that DPW would like to present is a great team approach. We've been working with the Macomb County Public Works Office, and that is identifying drains within our community that are plugged up with trees and branches and other debris that, as the city manager mentioned, the sooner we clean out, the less likely there is for the potential for flooding and heavy rain events. So working closely with our colleagues, we have a handful of before-and-after pictures here of what this drain in Delia Park looked like, the Gibson Drain, and what the good work of that team did after. So you can see how a lot of this debris would surely slow the flow of water, especially during a heavy rain event, and then after, a lot easier, especially this photograph here. That's going to really disrupt water flow and cause backups, where this clearly would not. So at that, City Council, I thank you for allowing me to present tonight and your support of the DPW. That's all I have. Thank you.
And Mayor, that concludes our presentations this evening. We're happy to address any questions or comments from you and the city council members and also audience members. Thank you.
Okay, so I think at this time, I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any items presented tonight. Okay, Ms. Wright?
Do we have a discussion about?
I don't know what we normally do, but my agenda says we're going to go to the audience first. Why don't we hear from the audience? Yeah, why don't we hear from you first, and then we can have a discussion amongst the council members?
Since I'm the only one here, do I get like tripled the time?
There's one other. And no, you don't.
So I really just wanted to talk about the FLOC automated license plate readers. I really think before this is approved, this is something that, I have a lot of questions that I think need to be answered, and I really think the residents need a chance to talk about this. Essentially, what we're doing is we're paying to allow the city to stalk us. And I know that that's a really harsh word, but if I affixed a GPS tracker to Mr. Vanderpool's car later tonight and just tracked where he went for 30 days, he would be a little creeped out and most likely go to the chief and try to do something about that. And so I know we're not, it's 22 cameras, and we're not going to be able to tell exactly where someone goes. But I mean, 30 days' worth of data is enough to tell where you go to church, when you leave your house to go to work, if you're having an affair with someone, if you're having medical issues and you're going to the hospital once a week for dialysis or chemo treatment. And that's a lot of information that could be misused in the wrong hands. So as I said, I was wondering how exactly it's going to be implemented. If we get, you know, notice from the hot list from NCIC for someone being an illegal immigrant, are we going to send a police officer out there to arrest them? Or is it just going to be something for just open warrants, kidnapping-like Amber Alerts, situations like that? As far as the privacy concerns go, if the police wanted to get my location data from my phone for seven days or longer, they would have to currently go and get a search warrant. It is, you know, part of my Fourth Amendment right. With this, it's a complete runaround. They don't have to get a search warrant. They can just pull up the information. It's going to be stored in the cloud for 30 days, and they're going to have access to it all. Now, some states have limited this data. New Hampshire, for instance, is limited to three minutes. That's long enough to capture the tag, search and see if it's on the hot list, and then delete it. That way, the state and the police cannot create some sort of dragnet, you know, some sort of tracking database where they can essentially see everywhere people go for those 30 days. As far as the audits go, I was wondering how frequently the chief was going to audit who uses it and what they use it for. And studies on these automated license plate readers, they found that about 10% of the checks run in the police stations are actually not for police business. So you're talking about officers who are looking up to see if their spouses are cheating or their friends, other things. So how often are these audits going to be run to ensure that this data is actually being used like it's supposed to? And are these audits going to be made available to the public? I think we should have a right to know if people are misusing this information. Additionally, if somebody is, you know, if a car, a license plate is pulled up and an open warrant isn't on the person who the car is registered for, but maybe they have a long criminal history, is that going to be reason to possibly follow this person and wait for them to commit a crime? You know, what's going to happen in that situation? Also, as far as identifying the plate goes, I think we all remember in 2020, Aurora, California, an African-American woman was pulled over with four minors in the car. They were then handcuffed at gunpoint and put on the ground. Apparently, that license plate came up as a stolen car, but it was for the wrong state. FLOC has about a 10% chance of issuing a wrong state in all their searches. So that's something to keep in mind as well. I gave Ms. Riska some information from the ACLU. There's enough copies for everyone to have it. It has a lot more information than I can give in four minutes, so please read it when you have time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Wright. Ms. Niasse? Good to see you again.
Nice seeing you. I try to stay away because I know that you guys were elected to take care of business on our behalf, and I appreciate what you do. But I do have a couple of areas that I would like to see addressed. We have an elite police force, but unfortunately, in traffic enforcement, it is not an effective police force. In the budget, it indicates that the issuance of traffic violations declined significantly in 2020 and '21 due to shutdowns related to the pandemic. That is not true. The reason that they were, fewer violations were issued was due to lack of enforcement. If anything, the violations has increased. I was one of those essential workers that worked through the whole pandemic, and I watched the number of vehicles running red lights increase dramatically starting March 23rd of 2020. Also, enforcing stop signs. I lived near a stop sign. One morning, 5:30-ish, I was watching that stop sign for 15 minutes. 14 vehicles went through. One stopped, two almost stopped, two didn't even slow down, and the rest, the brakes were applied, but the vehicles really didn't slow much. And that's also a bus stop. At 6:30, the school bus comes through and picks up the high school kids, and the vehicles are just zipping through there like crazy. And I'm seeing that the estimated violations issued for this fiscal year is 13,800. They could probably issue another 13,800 right at Purnell and LaGrange. I realize that once you've gotten a ticket, you probably won't be doing this again, but then you just go to the next stop sign and take care of that. Also, on the DPW, mowing has gone crazy. Sometimes they mow that pond for Abington Sub twice in one week. Generally, it's every other week, but sometimes getting out of mowing season, they'll be there twice in one week. Unfortunately, I already threw away my calendar with all the pond mowings on it from last year. Trees are over-pruned. They really don't need to prune them so that you can build a colonial house underneath one of these trees. I realize that in a city, you need to prune occasionally, but this has really taken it to the next level. In my neighborhood, one of my neighbors actually came up to me and said that she had a dream that I bought her a new tree because the tree in front of her house was pruned so horribly. We oversalt. I'm curious as to whatever happened to, I think it was maybe 12 or 13 years ago, Mrs. Sarko asked about the beet juice. Whatever happened to that? This watershed is to a freshwater river, lakes, and we're putting so much salt down there that it probably is affecting the ecological system of our... system of our watershed. And also, Washington Square, there's a detention pond there, near Washington Square Park, and I believe there are fragmities growing in that pond. And there's been something that was mowed, and there's two piles of rotting weeds, I'm assuming fragmities. And I'm wondering if we are working with the Clinton River Watershed Council. I mean, we're paying dues. I'm hoping that we're working with the Clinton River Watershed Council to find out how to get rid of those fragmities.
Okay, we will, I see Mr. Vanderpool taking notes over here, so we'll address all those and get responses to them.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Niasse. Okay, I'll close that portion. And Council, is there anyone who would like to speak on any of the presentations tonight?
I'll start.
Mrs. Sarowski?
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I would first of all like to thank all of our presenters, Police, Fire, and Public Works, because you guys did a wonderful job. You always do do a wonderful job, and we certainly thank you for all of your work and your services. So let me start with Police. So, Chief, wonderful job again. And for the license plate cameras, I do appreciate the proactive enforcement. I know that there are, as our lovely resident did mention, there are risks with some of our cameras. There are risks of, of course, getting the wrong person or overuse. Could you address, for one thing though, could you address the misuse or the potential misuse of the system? How it is policed? How we make sure that the officers and the employees of the police department are audited and make sure that, how that is addressed? Just like with the Lean system, how is that made, how you make sure that nobody is using it inappropriately?
Yes, thank you. It is very similar to the Lean Network. As you know, people might not know this, but a police officer can drive around the city of Sterling Heights all day long in his car. He can run every single plate in front of him all day long. We do this all day long, and you'd be shocked at how many times you run the plate and it comes back as an invalid plate, expired tags, or that plate is registered to someone that has an arrest warrant. We can do that now. We do it every day, all day. So we are absolutely running plates every single day, every single hour. This is an automated version of doing that. It's completely legal. And just like running a plate illegally, we had an officer said, say, inappropriately used the Lean Network, ran a plate that he should not have ran, and that led to his termination. That happened right here. So if I had a report of someone inappropriately accessing the system, there'd be a full investigation. And like I said, from days off work to termination, that's the remedy. And, you know, again, we don't have the policy drafted, our general order yet, but there would be an audit. We'd pull up a day or a time, look at the plates that were run, and then verify with those officers what was the purpose for it. And I think even in the software, when you go to query a plate, you have to enter a case number or the reason you're running the plate. So it's very easy to find out if that is legitimately why you ran that plate, based on why or the case number.
Great, thank you, Chief. So, I know that it's, we always worry that there's a misuse of any type of investigations. Like, in the healthcare system, there's a HIPAA law that we make sure that people are not going inadvertently or inappropriately going into medical records. The same thing with any other type of records. We want to make sure that people are appropriately going into the records. So there is oversight, and that we always should be going, we always need to have oversight over the use of any type of personal information. So I appreciate your giving us that little bit of information, Chief. So thank you for that. Proactive enforcement is very helpful, and we do need to make sure that we're trying to not always be reactive. Reactive is after the fact. It doesn't help us at all, really. So, I do appreciate that. I love that laser scanning of the crime scene. That really gives life, it gives us a personal view of what's happened after there's been an accident, helps with the court case, so that's great. I love the directed patrol unit. I think that that's going to be very helpful. I'm looking forward to seeing how that works out with those hotspot crime units. And I do want to ask you, just to give, if you could, just your opinion, I know it's an opinion, that since we have closed the jail and we have had those extra funds, I know this is an opinion, but that has been, well, I'm gonna backtrack that. I don't want you to give your opinion. I'm gonna give my opinion. I'm glad to see that those funds have been put to good use, because I know that there, that has been controversial, and closing a jail and putting the officers to a different use by having them take the people to jail over at the county has put them on a different path. They're not, they have to drive all the way over to the county. But I'm glad to see that those funds have been put to better use. So, Chief, that's all I have for you, really. I didn't want to put you in that seat and have you give too much, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. And so, I'm just gonna make some comments for Fire. Love to see the new D-FIBs. Being a nurse, I like to make sure that all our equipment is well worked, working well. So, thank you, Chief, for that. Staff, and I'm glad to see our training is going well. That sixth ambulance, I would like to make sure that that's up and running, so great. So I really don't have too many questions for you, Chief. I am happy to see that we are keeping our firefighters up and running, working well, so thank you for that. And that's all I have. I don't have any questions, so thank you. You don't really need to jump into any other seats. For Public Works, you can stay right where you are, Ms. Tura.
Come on up, Mr. Moore.
I don't need to have musical chairs.
She's got lots of questions.
I do not. But, love the new building, happy to see that. Actually, I do have a question.
You better get up, see?
Sorry, Mr. Moore.
You jinxed him, Mike.
Yeah, I did jinx him.
I can read her mind. She's just like a book.
Oh, that's a scary thought.
It is.
Very scary. So about flushing hydrants. I have a fire hydrant in front of my house, William Drive, William and Elizabeth.
Put it down.
And, yeah, I'm sorry, people, but yeah, my grandfather was William, I'm Elizabeth, and we live right by Stevenson High School. My maiden name was Stevenson. Of course, I bought the house. So, and that's a true story. So, when, do we have an idea of when we're gonna flush that guy?
Off the top of my head, I'd...
Of course.
Next week.
I know, yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sarowski. Off the top of my head, I don't know that one specifically, but I definitely know that site now, so I'll make sure that that one is taken care of. But there will be a systematic approach to how we do that. There is a rhyme and reason of hydrant flushing. It wouldn't be so much of just sporadically picking them. There will be a systematic approach to make sure that when a hydrant is flushed, it is flushed at the appropriate location in the system so that the water can scour the main and then get rid of all that debris and push it out.
I honestly don't remember ever having my hydrants flushed. Now granted, I work and have worked many years, so I could have missed it, of course. But, interesting. I would like to be home when that happens, just to see it go, so.
Give you a heads up.
All right, I appreciate that. And that's really all I have. So, thank you all for your reports and your due diligence and your good works. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Anyone else? Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna wait, but I guess I'll go. Briefly, through the chair to Mrs. Varney. We talked about adding an additional ambulance to the budget this year. I was curious where we stand with our transportation costs, because the original plan for ambulance was that they would hopefully break even and pay for themselves. So I was wondering where we stand in that whole process, and are we breaking even, I guess?
Ms. Varney?
So, in the current year's budget, there's replacement of two chassis, which was, we bought the eighth ambience in the current year, right? So, yeah, we put away about $300,000 a year into the capital improvement fund to fund the replacement capital, and we are at about break even with where we are now, assuming we stick to the plan of replacing the chassis at five years and then the ambulance later on.
The I-04 additional ambulances and firefighters, I just want to make sure we're staying within the budgetary parameters that we've set forth for this program. You know, it seems like we started with, I think it was four, then five, then six, now we have eight. And I understand partly it's because of breakdowns and issues we've had with some of the ambulances and needing to get them redone, but I just want to make sure we're being fiscally responsible with this program.
Can I clarify one thing? I just want to make sure that, Chief, what he talked about adding the sixth ambulance, that is not in the budget at that, this time. That is a future project that we want to investigate and work on and figure out how to fund. I just wanted to clarify that.
That's helpful.
Okay. Yeah, that's a future project that is not in this proposed budget right now.
Let me ask you another follow-up question, then. If that was added, would that change the, would we still be at break even, or would we now have to fund the program differently?
At this, in my current analysis, there would not be the funds to cover that sixth ambulance and another crew. So I know that part of the plan is to look at other ideas to fund that in the future. And I know the chief has some, and that's why it's a future project for him.
Okay, well, I won't put him on the spot today, but that's very helpful. Through the chair to Mr. Moore. I think Mrs. Niasse brought up, and a thing I hear a lot about, and I have my own opinions about it, but I was hoping you could talk about tree pruning. And do we now have a certified arborist on staff, or are they still a tree inspector? And where do we stand with that, Mr. Moore? Through the chair.
Mr. Moore?
Sure. As far as a certified arborist on staff, we do not currently have that. We are encouraging our staff members to become certified. They have all of the knowledge, the credentials, and the experience to do so. So, we're looking to, we're looking to encourage our staff to do that. However, we do have the ability to call in a certified arborist at any time should need arise. As far as, or in relation to pruning of the street trees, we do follow the ANZI. Off the top of my head, I forget, it's the ANZI Standard International Society of Arbiculture, ISA, standard for tree pruning, and that's tree pruning to raise. And within those parameters, it's specific to a municipality where the purpose of tree pruning in a municipality is far different than pruning a backyard tree or a tree elsewhere. The primary purpose is to elevate the tree so that emergency vehicles, such as fire engines and salt trucks, can drive underneath the trees that are in the right of way. I think what happens often is because we're on a rotation, we have now completed a one, excuse me, we've now completed the rotation to prune every tree one time over the last five to seven years. So, I think at times, residents who haven't had their tree pruned in five to seven years, it may be the first time they've seen their tree pruned, but it could be a dramatic change from what they had before. However, those trees are all pruned to a standard. Those trees are all healthy. And what may happen at times is when a tree is pruned, because there's a branch that, the threshold is 15 feet, that the branch cannot exceed when it has foliage. So if there is a branch that is at 14 feet in height with no foliage, we know that it will droop further, droop. It will. It'll be a lower hanging branch, for lack of a better term. So that branch would be cut off. Equally, though, as part of the specifications, it must remain symmetrical. So therefore, we'd have to go to the other side of the tree and potentially take another limb higher or lower so that the tree remains symmetrical. But, I'm sorry for the long-winded answer, but...
That's very informative.
The short answer is that we're aware of the emotional attachment that residents have to treat. We are very aware and in tune with that. Therefore, we take great pride in making sure that the trees are pruned correctly per standards set up by the International Society of Arbiculture.
I know that in my neighborhood, our trees were pruned, it had to be two years ago now, and there were severe concerns from some of the neighbors about how much had been taken away. And I know that now, I feel like with two years of growth on those prunings, trees, one, as a gardener myself, they bounce back very quickly, but two, I think the trees look a heck of a lot better than they did before. So I know that residents get concerned when you come through and take a bunch of limbs, and it's like the tree's naked. It's different than what you are used to seeing. But I think that your very long response, which was very good, tells residents we take this very seriously, and we're not just willy-nilly going out and chopping limbs down. And I think they can see that we have a standard and a plan. It might not be their plan, but I also get calls from residents when I know a garbage truck struck a limb and knocked, knocked down a limb in a neighborhood. So, we do this to protect residential homes, to protect their vehicles, and to protect our vehicles from striking. And so I appreciate that, Mr. Moore. And I would also say, what can we do to help the tree inspectors become arborists? Should we make it part of their program? Should we make the position arborist only? Should we, is there a carrot or a stick that we could use to help encourage them to become arborists? I think that most residents would rather have an arborist on staff than a tree inspector. Through the chair to Mr. Moore.
Great question, and we've had those internal discussions. Thank you for the comment. At this time, I'm hopeful that we can work with our team and we can steer them in the right direction.
Well, thank you, Mr. Moore. Now, through the chair to the Chief.
Which one?
Chief, I'm sorry, Police. I already talked about ambulances. I'm already past that. Chief, I share many of the concerns that Mrs. Wright, she actually made a much better presentation than I was going to make, so I'm throwing mine out the window because she has even more information than I do. You know, I have great fears of the overwhelming surveillance state, and I also have fears that, you know, I like comparing ourselves to other communities. We do it all the time. But at the same time, you know, I learned when I was a child, you know, if your friends jump off a bridge, are you going to do it too? And I think that the current Flock camera system is a bridge too far. I think it surveils our residents. I think it creates a constant web of surveillance. The scariest part of the presentation that you gave, while I'm sure this is a highly effective tool, there's all kinds of highly effective tools. You know, you can get a device that tracks every cellphone in the vicinity, and you really know where people are. That's a highly effective tool. But is it both privacy friendly and is it, you know, rights friendly? Now, I'm sure this is, as far as we know, it's constitutional and legal as it stands right now. But over time, what Mrs. Wright brought up was very interesting. Before, the police did not need a warrant to attack a tracking device to your car, and they could follow your device around and make a map of your movements. For years, they could do this. And the Supreme Court then said, 10, 12 years after this became available, whoa, you need a warrant for that, because the information captured is of such an extent that, yes, your car out in public is public knowledge, just like your car driving past the street is public knowledge. But at a certain point, if the government gathers enough information about you, they have a picture, not only of where you are going on a given day, but of where your life is on a given day. And I take the comments that Mrs. Wright made, and I think she speaks for a lot of people in this community, you know, about your health, about your relationships, about what you are doing and what you're not doing, is this information that we want to have in a database at the police station, because we always believe that we live in a society that is going to do the right thing. I have hope for that. But just like what happened in Washington DC two years ago, the right thing can get flipped on its head very quickly. We had an insurrection led by people who I think, in their minds, were doing the right thing, which were obviously illegal and wrong. So I have fears of a database like this. I have fears of what it could be used for, and frankly, I am absolutely against it. I can't even express how, it's frustrating to me. You know, there's a book by Sir Jeremy Bentham called The Virtual Panoptica. This is the idea of a future prison that essentially would be one long, open room in the middle, where a guard on top could stare down into all the cells and observe all the prisoners, and the prisoners did not know, they could not see up whether they were being observed or not. And it's the smartest thing, but that's what we're creating for society. We're all being observed all the time. And you make good points. You say, well, there are ring doorbell cameras that we can access. We can access with the permission of a resident, but we don't have cameras set up surveilling all of our residents, but China does. China has a device on people's phones where they know where all their residents go at all times. And I think we're sliding toward that. And we're just talking about cameras, I know, and people at home are gonna say, well, it's just a camera. But everything starts someplace. And I think that in Sterling Heights, I don't want to surveil my neighbors. And I know it can be highly effective to solve crimes, and I also agree with Mrs. Wright. If we're gonna keep this dead, I think 30 days is way too long. I think it should be seven days or less. The idea that you can then make a track, because the scariest part of the graphic you showed was, well, we've seen this car three times in 30 days. Well, if you put one of these on 15 Mile and Dodge Park where I live, you're gonna see my car 50 times in 30 days, 75... to see my car 50 times in 30 days, 75 times, 100 times. You're going to know where I'm going and where I'm coming from and whether I'm out. And that, to me, is really disrupting the privacy I had to live in the world. And you can say, well, anybody could have a video camera out there. They could, but it's not in the hands of the government. And I think that's where my concern is. So I don't know where my colleagues stand on this. I would either like to remove this from the budget, or at least put some, take it out for right now and give some time to get some real information on this. Because I feel like this is a severe privacy violation that we are just going to slide in without further discussion. And I think most residents did not even know it was going to be here today, and now we're talking about it. And if we vote on it, now we're going to approve it, and we're not going to hear from residents until it starts to, you know, look, I guess I have a question through the chair. Through the chair to the chief of police, is this information foilable? Can a lawyer come and FOIA the department for records of where a car is going or where a car is coming from? Through the chair.
Yeah, the, Mr. Kozubski and I have already started working on this about whether or not this data would be foilable. And we believe that the number of searches and how the police are using it, but the actual individual plate with the GPS location would not be, if I understand that correct, Mr. Kozubski. I think that's where we came down on the FOIA side of this. So someone couldn't say, have you seen Councilman Radke's car? I want to know the date, the time, and the GPS locations. That would not be foilable, not from our system.
Well, through the chair to Mr. Kozubski, could you explain a little bit more to me why certain information is foilable but certain information isn't? Because I know that a 911 call, for example, is absolutely and totally foilable. They have to redact certain information, but as a public record, it is foilable. Could you explain this a little bit further to me, Mr. Kozubski?
Thank you, Councilman Radke. So there are certain exceptions. One exception in particular is police activity and the methods in which police officers do work. So that's one exception that has been upheld through the Flock system in several states, which prohibits the ability to just give out that type of information. The information is also only being accessed for purposes of police, purposes for investigative purposes. So that open investigation also precludes the FOIA ability. So once it's purged after 30 days and there's no investigation started, that information is gone.
Well, I guess I'm going to move that we remove this for the budget for 90 days to gather more information and to make a concerted public decision about whether we want to surveil our residents at all times. I move that.
Okay, motion is on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing none, motion fails.
Thank you, Mike. I'm sorry to see that. That is very depressing to me, that we're going to, I guess, go headlong into a surveillance state without any discussion of it at all. The other thing that I'd like, and I think I spoke with the city manager about this, is I had previously asked for a budget amendment to really dig into our zoning map and our ordinances as to relates to zoning. I'm willing to not have that vote and put that off if we could further discuss it at strategic planning in June, and hopefully come up with a plan for how we might want to change our zoning map, and then create a plan for maybe next year's budget to really attack it in an effective manner. I've already spoken with the city manager about that. And if Mike, I guess, without objection, if we could move forward with that, I will forego that motion today.
Okay. Mr. Vanderpoel, is there anything you want to add? Is there, I mean, is there any reason we couldn't have this as a topic of discussion in June?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Radke, I think it's certainly appropriate for a discussion at strategic planning. There's a number of topics on that session. I believe that you had brought this up before at the initial session of strategic planning, so it's certainly ripe for a follow-up. Thank you.
I think that would be appropriate. I've been meaning to talk to you about that. I'm interested in it. I'd like to know more about what changes you'd like to see before I was going to allocate $300,000 in funding. See if we could pick things off one at a time without doing a full-scale rewrite of the zoning ordinance. So why don't we do it that way? It sounds like...
We already talked about it, so it seemed like, just to get more information, then we can have Mr. McLeod give a background on some of the topics and some of the things that we shouldn't report. I still think we need to rewrite the whole thing, but I agree, there might be some low-hanging fruit that we can address immediately.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Radke?
No, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mrs. Kosky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, since you're sitting there, I'll start with you. You're going to receive seven new police officers. Five are going to be the crime division. What exactly will they be doing? Will they be going out into the neighborhoods, or is that just going to be traffic?
Yeah, the officers will be fully uniformed, so they will not be undercover officers. So full Sterling Heights police uniforms, driving Sterling Heights police cars, fully marked, which is big. Residents like to see the police, they like to be visible in our neighborhoods, our commercial areas. So what I envision is if we have a subdivision that had 10 cars broken into overnight, they would be working that area. If we had a commercial area that had five catalytic converters sawed off the bottom of their car in the Walmart parking lot or this tool and die shop, we would send those officers out to that area. If we had excessive speeding complaints in a certain area that our traffic division just can't get to, we really want to get to that street and do aggressive traffic enforcement, oh yeah, we throw those guys out there and write a lot of tickets. And we know that's probably one of the best deterrents to running stop signs or speeding is getting a ticket. So we envision using it across the board in all of those ways. We've kind of, we're still narrowing it down, but we believe the schedule will most likely be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night. They'll be working the afternoon shift. That's when most of our calls happen. Most of our serious calls happen. So they'll be out there when we need them, when the runs are coming in, completely supplemental to our current staff. I mean, this is really exciting that we have our normal level of officer engagement out there, that we have minimums every single shift. So we'll have our normal afternoon shift handling all those 911 calls, we'll have our normal traffic guys, and then we'll have five additional officers doing nothing but proactive enforcement. Stopping suspicious cars that don't belong in certain areas, taking targeted enforcement action, and they're not getting pulled off by 911 calls or being dispatched anywhere because these are supplemental officers for the first time since I've been the chief here that will have this capability. So very excited about it.
So am I. That's something that we've needed for some time. Talking about patrol, how about, or what are your plans for keeping our park trails safe? People walking, riding their bikes, women alone? Any plans for any kind of additional safety there?
Yeah, great question. During COVID, we saw unprecedented use of our parks. They were crazy, crowded, packed. People on the trails, I've never seen anything like it. I remember Dodge Park when COVID hit, oh my God, the people outside walking. So we actually started an overtime detail because we just didn't, we don't have extra officers to patrol the trails and go in the parks. So we had to bring officers in on overtime to give us some basic level of coverage. And we're going to continue to do that, but now with our two new community service officers, that's going to be part of their summertime job duties. Schools are done, so middle school, high school programming, stuff that we would normally have them doing on a day-in, day-out basis, that kind of winds down, but summer is open. So we're going to have two officers get out there with segways, bike patrol, and patrol our parks on a, you know, a much more consistent basis, three to four times the coverage than we've ever had with these two dedicated officers. That's their main goal in the summer, one of their main functions. So excited about that.
Will you be using the explorers for any type of activity during the summer, additional patrol?
They help with the Memorial Day Parade and obviously Sterling Fest, because those are young people, sometimes, you know, 14, 15 years old. You do not want them walking alone, by themselves, getting involved in something, because they dress like police officers, they might look like police officers, I would never want them hurt or assaulted. So we like them in highly directed situations like Sterling Fest or the parade, where you have one-on-one, we have an officer assigned to this batch of five, another officer assigned to this batch of five, because we don't want anything to happen to those young people. So to have them out patrolling the parks, it's probably not going to happen, but we do utilize them for large-scale city events.
So you'll be training our future police officers?
We've been hiring, we've hired several of our ex-explorers now as police officers here.
One other question. I received a number of calls, complaints regarding people panhandling. What is your program procedures, plans for handling that?
Yeah, we've seen a big uptick in panhandling, and I don't know if it's the, after COVID, financial assistance dwindling down. I don't know what has happened, but this isn't a unique Sterling Heights problem. If you've driven anywhere in Metro Detroit, you will see it on every corner, you'll see it on every parking lot. I was up in Shelby Township at the Home Depot, and there was three people panhandling in the middle of the parking lot, sitting on the little traffic islands. And I thought, this is crazy. And this is, we're seeing this everywhere. So I've met with my executive command staff with the captains, and we've talked about the best way to address this. It's illegal to enter the roadway to ask for money. It's illegal to stand in the right-of-way, which is the area between the curb and the sidewalk, and ask for money. It's dangerous, it blocks traffic. We don't want anyone to get hurt out there. But I also understand if someone is hurt down on their luck, I understand. If you're truly homeless and you're looking for money, but there's got to be a better way than walking into traffic to get money. So our officers are very aware of this, and we're trying to balance protecting those that truly need help and support. We actually have resource cards that we hand out when we show up at the scene to tell us resources at the state and county level to get housing assistance and financial assistance. But ultimately, if they don't adhere to the rules and the laws of Sterling Heights, the state of Michigan, and they continue to enter the roadway, they will be cited for that action. But we want to handle this as compassionately as possible, and we're going to actually train our officers to make sure that we are educating the person that's panhandling and asking for money, making sure they have the right to do that because it is legal to do, but also make sure they don't get hurt or injured. So it's a balanced blend.
Will you be using the social worker for any of this activity?
Absolutely. If that person truly is in need and needs help or support, or they truly don't have a house to live in and they want help getting housing, that's what Amy Compton, the city social worker, does, and we would absolutely use her services.
Yeah, because I recall in the past, we've run across people camping in some of our open spaces, nature center and...
Yeah, and the trouble with that, Ms. Kosky, is that the, some of those people don't want help. They don't want to be relocated, they don't want housing, they want to be left alone. That becomes very, very difficult.
One question about the Flock cameras. I recall that we did have the one back in, you said, 2012. I didn't remember what year. Why was the reason, other than it was just too much for one vehicle to operate, or were there any complaints or any problems, or...
No.
Why did we discontinue?
Yeah, so the data that was coming in from one car was not very much. That car broke four times in those three years, the camera system broke. And then the other departments weren't driving that car around. So the idea was the seven agencies, we were all going to put our license plate data in the same system. So the idea was, oh, we just had a break-in and entering of this house last night, and I could check with Clinton Township and Macomb County Sheriff to see if the suspect vehicle, we saw a red Ford pickup truck with this parcel plate drive-by, I could type in that plate of that parcel plate of that red Ford pickup truck and see if Macomb County, Clinton Township had seen that vehicle or had a hit on that license plate. And their car wasn't up and running. So the data was terrible. There just wasn't enough cameras. Seven cameras was not enough for the entire, you know, Macomb County area. And then the cameras were breaking. So it just didn't work. The idea is on the backend, having a database of license plates to solve crimes, and it just wasn't there.
Who would have access to input this information? I want to look for a plate. Who would enter it? Every officer on duty?
If you're, what do you mean? If you're looking for a suspect vehicle that you want to enter in this...
Let's say that you have an Amber Alert called in.
Yep, an officer.
And you have the plate number is given to you by whoever is calling in. Who actually does the process of entering it in and...
Yep. The officer would type in the plate, the vehicle description, and then there's a box, and they have to put why they're looking for the license plate. So the idea is I put in ABC 123, and I'm working afternoon shift today, because I'm looking for that car because he tried to stab his girlfriend, and he fled in this car. So we're going to put that plate in the system. He's now wanted for a possible attempt homicide. And when the plate comes up, so I enter it, but then every single officer in Sterling Heights, and possibly Warren, Clinton Township, Macomb County Sheriff, that has Flock, they're going to get the alert that says, wow, this is a wanted plate. But it just says wanted. Then it's up to the officer to read the box of why it's wanted. It's going to say, wanted, possible connection to attempt homicide in Sterling Heights. So again, you have to write the reasons for the vehicle being entered into the system, but any officer could enter a plate.
Okay, but the reason has to be given.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. That's all I have for you. You're doing a great job, and I'm pleased to see all the different programs. Reminder what is going on in our police department, and I'm excited about the deputy chief. Looking forward to that. Next is our fire chief. Chief, just a couple of basic questions. We're looking at possibly instituting a six ambulance in the future. What would the plans be for using that ambulance? Would they be given a special duty?
Yeah, what we're trying to vet out right now is how we can use that, one, for recruiting, but also handle our high-low frequency, our high calls that are low acuity. So if we would hire EMT basics, they could be like our farm team, and then we can eventually get them to firefighter paramedics and go to the 56-hour side. But a lot of that would be to handle the workload of running the calls that we have to our senior facilities that are probably lower acuity in other areas of the city. So that's kind of the reason behind it. But again, it's just an idea. It's not in this budget. It's kind of what we're looking for towards the future.
I think it's a great idea, but I would like to see them hired as paramedics.
We'll take whatever we can get when we stand up this program. So we're not going to say, okay, because you have all these qualifications. If we were able to hire a firefighter paramedic in that role that would work 40 hours, we would hire that person and eventually transition them to 56 hours at that point in time. Again, it's just, it's a concept we're kind of figuring out how we can use it for multiple facets in the fire department.
Well, I can tell you, it is a great service that we desperately need because recently, a very dear friend of mine fell between the bed and the wall, couldn't get up, house is locked solid shut. Your men were able to open the door, but of course, that meant the next day she had to get the door fixed. She didn't need to go to the hospital, but she needed that assistance. Our population is growing older, shall we say? We're becoming very mature. Rather than break open the door, I know we have the lockbox helping out here. It's been a while. And my friend, I think, is going to order one, and I'm going to order one too because my husband fell the other night. And thank goodness, my granddaughter was there, and between us, we got him up off the floor. But sometimes it's very difficult, and we need assistance. So I think your plan is great, but I would like to see it as a paramedic so that they can fill in wherever they're needed. And I would like to see you advertise the lockbox more so that we seniors think about it more and will call and order one, because I'm probably going to put my order in tomorrow. So give us a little information on it.
The lock boxes, we have two programs. We have one for a commercial Knox box, and then we have a residential Knox box. They are both on the website, but maybe what we'll do is we'll put like a video together that we can run on, you know, our website, you know, it's like the YouTube video for that program. So what it allows us to do is have a key to your facility in this secure box. We only get access to that box by punching in our ID number for the city, and we keep a record of who gets into that box and who doesn't. So we have a main key in every fire apparatus that allows us access to those boxes.
And the cost?
I would have to look up the cost for you. Off the top of my head, I don't have that information. But I do believe that that information is on the website. I also believe the application is on the website for those two programs.
Very good. You'll hear from me tomorrow. Thank you.
Okay.
Last one is Mr. Moore. It's great that you're flushing the hydrants because that's something that really needs to get done. Question is, when do you paint them?
Thank you, Councilwoman Kosky. We actually paint them every...
We actually paint them every summer. So during the summer months, we hire a few high school, well, just graduated high school students to go through throughout the neighborhoods and paint the fire hydrants. And we also budget funds in the water division to have fire hydrants painted as well. So this summer, they will be receiving a touch-up.
But do you get to paint all of them? Or are they on a rotation basis, different sections of the city? So if somebody says, I haven't seen mine painted ever, how often, or how do they rotate their painting?
We have roughly 7,000 hydrants. So it takes a handful of years to get through it. We typically paint 500 a year. So the math would equate to roughly 10 to 15 years, depending how many we can get done. However, you'd be surprised. We do receive a handful of requests that they would ask us to have their hydrant painted. So it's no problem just to throw them on the list. So should anybody be listening at home, feel free to contact the Department of Public Works. We can add you to the list.
Very good. Our new water meters. I understand that there have been some installation problems where the company has not been able to install simply because of a water shut-off valve, and the city has called in to do that. Is there any warning or idea or anything that, as a resident, we can be prepared in case something goes wrong?
Are you referencing if something goes wrong during the install?
Yes. Like he's ready to put it on, and he says, oh my, I just broke your valve. We're gonna have water all over the place. What do we do?
Sure. Typically, what we would do is, they're certified and trained staff in plumbing, and they know how to shut the water off. So if there were to be a catastrophic failure of sorts, if something went sideways, they know to move to the next valve and attempt to close that. However, they do have their own staff, as well as us, available 24/7 to where we can shut the water off at the curb, worst-case scenario. But typically, when those situations occur, they are able to shut it down in the house without the fear of flooding out a basement.
So when they install the meter, just so that I understand this clearly, they shut off the water to the whole house in order to install it, correct?
That's correct. The water will be shut off inside, predominantly in the basement. Most sets are in the basement, so they would shut the water off in the basement, not at the curb, but inside the house.
Okay. When does a home have a problem with the shut-off? Is it a certain age of the home when it was built?
There's really no telling. We have some homes that may have older valves that could potentially be leaky. However, there could be newer valves. So there's really no good way to pinpoint prior to an installation what home may or may not have a faulty valve.
I just replaced sinks and countertops in my bathrooms. Guess what? Now said there, you're getting a new chipper for chipping for also the residents. If a resident has a tree that they want to cut down, or a mammoth bush that looks like a tree, what is the cost? And how do they go about scheduling a chipping? And what do you do with the chips afterwards? Are they available for any of the residents to come and gather them from your backyard?
Sure. Couple part-answer to that question. The chipper will be predominantly for severe storm damage. Currently, DPW no longer chips branches at the curb for a fee. That now is all contracted out. Should residents want to receive chipping from the city, if I'm not mistaken, don't quote me on this, but I think the rate is $65, maybe a bit more, per half hour of chipping for a reasonable pile. If you cut a forest down, clearly you're gonna pay more for the amount of labor. When the contractor, you call through DPW, schedule through the contractor, they show up to each residence, they inform the residents. We're kind of a facilitator. We don't perform any function for this topic. Those chips are taken by the contractor. I don't believe those are available for residents. When we do storm damage chipping, we take our chips to JH Hart off of 15 and Mount. So we don't keep any of that debris at our site any longer. Everything is taken off-site.
Okay. Thank you very much. I really like your new building.
Thank you.
And I'm sure every employee really enjoys it.
Yes, they do.
Doing a fine job. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Mrs. Arco?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Since Mr. Moore is sitting in the hot seat.
I'm here.
I know. It's easy. I mean, to me, I'm happy with our budget. I'm not making any changes, you know. The presentations were great. I want to thank everybody for the time that they put into us, because it's well worth it. But, but, let's go to the, stay on the water meters. I know that on my street, the company that's installing them was actually putting up second notices that people need. And I think my house was the only one on that side of the street that actually had the new meter in it. Say a person just isn't comfortable with an outside company coming into their home, but they would be happier if it was a city employee that was coming into their home to make the change. Is that an option for them? Through the chair to Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore?
It is. That is an option. We would prefer and desire that residents go through the contracted company. They've been vetted very vigorously through the Department of Public Works. Additionally, any employee of the contractor who installs the meters is vetted through a, they have to meet specific criteria and a background check through HR before they're given permission to work for the city as a contractor. So we are comfortable at the Department of Public Works with the folks who are installing the meters. However, should someone still feel so inclined that they're still uncomfortable with a non-city employee, we can make accommodations to do that. We want to work with the residents. Again, similar to the trees, we fully understand that people are sensitive to trees, and we fully understand and comprehend a stranger coming into your home. So should there be a concern for someone, we will absolutely work with them to, we find their comfort level to make sure that we can install the meter for them.
Okay. And another option would be for them to, after they set up their appointment with the company, to actually call the department and let them know that this is what's happening on a particular day. And, you know, yes, so that they are assured that this is really going to happen. It isn't a scam. And I always think about the seniors that are just waiting for the next scam to come up, and they're gonna get caught in it. Okay. I too like the building. Can you tell us a little bit about the morale of the employees there?
Oh, it's through the roof. It's great. It's been that way for a long time. I mean, it's, we gotta, I mean, you can probably hear in my voice. We have a great group of people there, and I must say, they all do a phenomenal job. We have so many very intelligent, dedicated, hard-working folks that truly care. And they want to do a good job. And that's why I've made mention tonight already that we relate very well with the residents. You know, we feel that, you know, we make normal happen in the background. The things that we do with the water and the sanitary and the storm, you know, we make normal happen in the background so that folks can continue with commerce and continue with their daily life. And we take a lot of pride in that. But the morale has been great. The new building really kicked it off. And, you know, there's, as you've seen quickly in the video, we've got the gym in the new building. And I think there's been, almost three-quarters of the staff have signed up to use the gym. So we're getting a great participation rate for staff to, you know, before work or after hours, to take their leisure to work out in the gym. But there's already, we've got a Biggest Loser Challenge with the gym going on in the department, where there's 20-plus people who have, you know, joined this, you know, friendly, who can lose the most weight. But, and then there's discussions. We're already talking internally about cookouts and barbecue lunches and things like that. So no concerns for me. I couldn't be happier with the group that we have.
And they were good before they got the building. It's just that they were a little oppressed, if that's what they get.
Yeah, and, you know, respectfully, it was a tough environment to work in. And it's a tough job at the DPW, there's no doubt. We work long hours. There is no second shift coming in. We are the only shift, and it's an all-day shift at times from 16-plus hours. So it's a tough job. It's a hard job. But we're appreciative of what we have in the building.
Thank you. The water chart that we talked about as far as usage, will an employee be, or a resident be able to go directly into their bill and see this usage on their own without us telling them?
Yes, that is our goal. We have yet to finalize the details of that software program. We're still working through that process. Our thought was, we would get to monthly billing first, and then we would begin to take that deep dive into the technology aspect and then begin to unveil that. But yes, that is our goal, that the graph I showed you was an example. But our goal would be to have something very similar that we can, you know, similar to the fire chief mentioned, create a video with our colleagues in community relations and show, we want to keep this very simple. I don't want this overcomplicated to log online and check this information. So we want to simplify the process. But yes, to answer your question, my goal is to have that hourly readout. Pick a day, keep it so simple to pick a day, hourly readout, and you can see your usage.
Okay. And then lastly is, who actually trims the tree in the right-of-way on the county roads? Like, there's, I'm off, you know, where I'm at, it's off Shainer. So at one point, believe it or not, it was a grant that we received when Guy Kevi was DPW director. And the trees have been planted there. I don't think they've been trimmed probably three times, and that would be, what, 10, 15 years now? So who actually maintains that? Because some of, you know, when I see the crews that are coming in to take care of the right-aways, there are limbs that hang over, and if they're on some kind of, you know, mower, they could hit their head easily.
So our contractor maintains all of those roads. However, there are a few provisions in some of the contracts that we have with the county and with the state as far as annual reimbursement for services performed. So unfortunately, we're tied in some aspects to how much service we can perform based on the amount of reimbursement we would receive. However, my colleague, Eric Skirda, who's here today, the operations manager, has been working very diligently and done a good job, and actually increased that amount more recently to where we're gonna be receiving additional funding back. So we can pay close attention to those major road streets and see if we can start to knock some of those off the list.
Okay. I'm happy.
Appreciate it. I'm happy too.
Yeah, I know. Then we're all happy. So that's it. So thank you very much. And then I'm gonna go to the fire chief, because that's gonna be easy. We'll save the best for last, okay? I'm really excited about the future project of the part-time, whether they be EMTs or paramedics in the high-volume areas of the day. How does the union feel about this? Do we have union approval that, yes, this is okay to do?
It's being negotiated.
Okay, so that's something that we were approving, but hasn't been approved by the union yet.
No, that ambulance is not something that's in the budget now. That is a future project that we're working on.
Just a future project?
Yes.
Because I really think it's a good idea to have the farm team. I mean, we talk about recruiting. It wouldn't be any different than having internships within City Hall. Is you already know who's coming in. You train them, you know, and then if they decide they want to stay, it's a great opportunity for them, but it's also a great opportunity for us, because we know what we're getting. And lastly, I have to agree with Mrs. Kosky, as I think that we need to start another lockbox campaign where we let people know that they are available, and they're reasonably priced for, the door is gonna cost you more than the lockbox if a door has to be replaced.
That is correct, yes.
Yes. So to me, I think we need to start a campaign and let people know that that is a safe way to go. And that's it. All right. Okay. Through the chair to Chief Dwardjikowski. Let's talk Flock boxes or what have cameras. Okay. You, it's mentioned that there's 22 cameras. Are these placed at intersections? Are they placed in between, like stops or lights? You know, traffic lights? How are the, how do you determine where you need these?
To capture the greatest volume of cars into and out of the city to cover north, south, east, west, and, you know, where more of the traffic is at. That's where you want data at the end of the day for the tool to be effective. We would foresee putting them at intersections, because there's existing poles already there that you could already use. You don't have to put up a freestanding, a separate pole. So I would say most of them are gonna be at intersections throughout the city.
Okay. And suppose, and I guess, how do you focus on just the license plate? I guess would be, especially when there's so many different heights and vehicles.
Yeah, so fascinating to, I actually did the program in 2012. I was the guy that helped Utica with the grant, get the cars. So I'm very, very familiar with license plate reader technology. There's artificial intelligence. There's an infrared camera. It takes a black and white image of the license plate at subsonic speeds. Like I said, the car could be traveling 100 miles an hour away from the camera. It captures the plate crystal clear. Takes a black and white image of the plate, and it cuts out just the license plate. It blows up the license plate in black and white, but it also takes a color image of the car, and it overlays the two images together. On that black and white image, it will have the license plate number. And the officer, as soon as they get a hit on their system, it would make it an alert noise. They pull it up, and it shows the plate, the gigantic black and white image of the plate. Before the officer is to do anything with it, stop the car, pull the occupants out of the car, engage in the car, they have to, and they're gonna be told this in training. They look at that plate, and it's a clear image. It's gonna say Texas Plate, ABC123. And they look at that plate, and they're behind it now. They're like, well, there it is, ABC123. But it's a Michigan plate. The officers are gonna have to understand that that could happen. And they're not to do anything until they verify that the image of the wanted plate is the actual car in front of them. That's just, that's license plate reader technology 101. You don't stop a car unless you know what you're stopping it for, and it's a direct hit in the system, a valid hit.
Well, then I would say, if it's a black and white plate, and you can tell the color of the car, why doesn't the system give you the color of the license plate? So that would help you know that it's not, it could be a Michigan, Ohio, Pennsylvania, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah, the image would show you, because all plates have the name of the state, you know, written on the plate. But there is, if, depending on the technology, I haven't seen Flock's full printout of how the plate looks, but there is a color overlay, a close-up of the plate, then a full color image. But it's a little bit, it's taken back from the vehicle. So maybe you can't see the direct color, like Hawaii plate has the rainbow in it. Like, to get that level of detail, you might lose that in that black and white image. And the reason they use black and white image is because it's so precise, and it can be done in the dark, total darkness, with the infrared illuminators on the camera.
Okay. You listed the number of communities that are using this Flock system now. Okay, and if you're looking for a plate, and we can interact with that system, does the Flock system interact with all of our other systems that we use?
It's a standalone system right now. Like, it wouldn't go into our record system or anything else. It would literally just be, you log into Flock, and Flock is a standalone thing. It would integrate with nothing else.
Okay, so it's standalone?
Yes.
I guess then, okay. Is this, you know, we've heard of other communities, other states, other cities, maybe not even, that would say, I was in Toledo, and I got a ticket, you know, 30 days after I was there, because they told me I didn't stop at a stop sign. I didn't stop. I was speeding. Is that what we're using Flock for?
No, absolutely not. In the state of Michigan, it's illegal to have red light cameras, which they're typically called in other states, where you go through the intersection, takes an image of your plate, and they mail you the ticket. Those are not allowed in Michigan, and we're not using those here for that purpose. It doesn't even do that. and we're not using those here for that purpose, it doesn't even do that, that's not, that's not even a part of the process with the Flock camera system, so no, it's not for traffic enforcement or rating tickets.
Okay, would this identify a hit-and-run accident?
Absolutely, so if we know a gray car, after this, you say it's a fatal accident, pedestrian gets hit, and someone says, yeah, a gray Toyota pulled away right after the accident, and we go to Flock, we look at that intersection at, you know, 16 and Shainer, and there is a gray Toyota within one minute of the accident driving away, it's got a plate, now, at that point, Councilman Zeriko, all it is is a possible suspect, right, it's just a plate of a car that may be somewhere, so we'd make contact with that driver, were you out in this area at this time, did you see anything that occurred, what did you see? And we start our investigative process, just like if we got the plate on the vehicle, someone says, oh, yeah, ABC 123 drove right by, I think that's the car that hit the lady, we would, we had addressed it the exact same way, it's just an investigative lead.
Would this also identify somebody that was maybe driving under the influence? Where, do you know what I'm saying, that they're swerving all over the road?
It could, the only problem with that is after the facts say, we don't find the car till later that night or the next day, or the car's parked, now we don't have the person operating, we don't know who was in the car at that time, so I guess you could say, oh, there was this, you know, white pickup truck swerving in and out of traffic, and the, the driver appeared to be drunk, and we get the plate, and maybe we enter that into the system, and all of a sudden, it alerts, uh, two miles away, and the officer goes, oh, wow, look at this plate's wanted, they read the comment box, wanted for possible OWI enforcement, so the officer would say, yeah, that's the car, that's the truck, yeah, that, that car is swerving in and out of traffic, and appears to be under the influence, the officer would still have to do their due diligence, like any other drunk driving, so they have a reason to stop the car.
Okay, um, and you brought up 16 and Shainer. To me, anyway, since we fixed the road on Shainer, it's a Speedway, and we have two cameras set up, one's at 15 and one's at 16 and Shainer, then we also, this red light at Canterbury, and let's just say that somebody's going 85 miles an hour, as soon as they hit 15 mile, and they start driving north, they actually go through the light at Canterbury when it's red, and they end up in an accident at 16 and Shainer, would you be able to use the information that says, when he says, oh, no, I was going the speed limit, would there be a way to see that and know that that car was speeding?
No, no speeding data at all.
So you couldn't say, the picture was taken at such and such time at 15, and it was taken at such and such time at 16, and you couldn't determine how fast they were going?
I guess you could go back, I don't know, that you would have to really in court explain if there was any buffer in time between the image taken, upload times, and to accept, to put that information forward in a, some kind of court case, that would be difficult, trying to time it, this image taken here, so you had to travel 82 miles an hour in order to physically get between these two cameras, I guess you could make that argument, I, I've never heard of that, being used for that purpose.
Okay, just thought I'd ask. Okay, and I'm in favor of the deputy chief, do you know where we stand with that, as far as the union goes?
It's, as the fire chief said, it's being negotiated.
Okay, good to know. I will say that we can approve the budget with these cameras tonight, it's not a problem, I, I still would want more questions asked, we don't have to expense the money tomorrow morning, I mean, we could, we have time to talk about this, to put everything in place, to inform the residents, the other thing, will the residents know exactly where these cameras are being installed?
Um, I believe so, on our map, we would probably show a layout of where the camera placements are at, that part, I want to see what best practices, and what other communities are doing with camera placement, on that, that website I showed you on my PowerPoint slide, you have a transparency dashboard, you talk about the cameras, how many there are, how they're being utilized, FOIA questions that come up all the time, and whether or not we put dots on a map of where the cameras are, I'm unsure of that at this point, and whether or not that's going to be specified, we're just going to say 22 cameras placed throughout the city, that's still in the air, as far as how we document that on the website.
Okay, nothing further, thank you for all your answers, and thank you all again for all the time you put into this presentation, because it really is helpful in making decisions. Nothing further.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, while, chief, while you're sitting there. It's like the rotating seat. So, first of all, the deputy chief position, I'm totally on board with that, I think it's, it's well justified, and look, looking forward to having, you know, some relief up there for you. As far as the redirect, redirect program, can you tell me what timeframe that they're looking at to implement that?
Yeah, we just had a meeting last week Friday with the Macomb County prosecutor, Linda Davis, the president of FAN, and myself, and a, I believe it's Livingston County, who is already doing a very similar program, and someone from New Jersey, who's been doing this all over the state, so this isn't something new, it's been used and actually very, very successful in diversion, it's a diversion program, instead of sending someone to the county jail, you get them off of drugs, that's, that solves the underlying problem, quite, the problem is, how do you do that? Who are the people getting them off of drugs? Who are the peer support, family support counselors? Who pays for this? This is always the problem, when you talk about substance use disorder, who fixes the problem? It's messy, it's complicated, it's expensive, and you know what's easy? You arrest someone, you throw them in the county jail, that's easy, it's a hammer being used for every single skill that we needed, you know, to accomplish, and a hammer doesn't do it with someone that is addicted to something, so you need more tools, it's expensive, it takes time, it takes programming, so we would like, the, the county prosecutor had a thousand questions, I had a thousand questions, we're going to meet with the Livingston County people who are already running this program, to figure out what kind of crimes would be eligible for this diversion, do you divert them right at the time they're arrested or after the arrest, and it, what happens if they don't follow through with the treatment? Then do you follow through with the original charges? And, you know, there's all of these questions that we want answered, I, I would hope that we can get this program up and running in the coming months, you know, one to three months, I would love to start doing something, because it's better than nothing, so we're working on it as we speak.
So can you explain to me what the difference between that is, and say, a drug court?
Yeah, so drug court's exactly the same thing, so drug court, you're arrested, you're processed, you go to the jail, you come out, you go see a judge, and the judge says, okay, I'm not going to sentence you to any jail time, but if you complete this whole course of treatment, I will dismiss these charges that are in front of me, so it takes a very focused effort by the judge, it takes a program in place, a lot of resources, a lot of money, I know our court right now is presently exploring that, opening up a drug court, so you could use a drug court in combination with this diversion program, and to give you an idea of what this might look like, say we get called to a commercial area in our city, someone's loitering around the building, we stop them, we say, what are you doing back here? Story doesn't make any sense, it's 2:00 in the morning, we pat him down, and we find heroin, crack cocaine in his pocket, it's possession, it's a felony possession of narcotics, the question is, do I arrest him and take him to jail? He's a drug addict, what's, so in Livingston County, what they're doing, and in New Jersey, they actually call someone from the program to the scene, we, we get the person's data, we write a full report, we know who they are, we know the charges, we then hand them off, it's kind of like our quick response, when we knock on the door, we say, we have someone here to get you help and treatment, we do it right there at the time, instead of making the arrest, the custodial arrest, taking the officer off the road, transporting the person to the county jail, we then send them directly into someone that can get them treatment that night, or that, at least start the process with the treatment, and not make the custodial arrest, with the promise being, if they don't follow through with that treatment, we just follow through with the charges, we know who the person is, so that is a way to free up our officers for some of these low-level offenses, where clearly it's a personal use drug habit, and I know it's a felony having possession of this drug, but not making the arrest, that's an example of what that looks like, so that has nothing to do with court, that happens literally live on the street in real time, where the court is more after the fact.
So would our social worker be involved in that at all?
Uh, she could, the question is, again, wow, every single time an officer has this weapon, if it's 9:00, 10:00, midnight, who's coming out? So you need a, in the Hope Not Handcuffs, we have something called angels, so if someone comes in the lobby, happens all the time, they're strung out, they're crying, they need help, they're a heroin addict, and they're in the lobby, say, I need, I need help, we, they sit in the lobby, we get them something to eat, something to drink, we call an angel from Families Against Narcotics, they come into lobby, they do the intake sheet, we find out where to send them, so we're literally doing that, instead of in our lobby, we're doing it at the scene of this possession case, that's what, but who are those angels? Who supports that? Who funds that? Who fills those positions? And that's part of the $1.2 million grant that FAN was able to secure.
So, pretty much stay tuned.
Yes, yeah.
A lot of unanswered answers.
Really excited about what this could mean.
I would be concerned if our social worker had to be involved, because I think we need a second social worker already, I think we have kept her very busy, and she's doing phenomenal work, from what I understand, so I just worry about burning her out, giving her too many programs to be involved with. And, um, I guess we'll go to the Flock. So, I am all in favor of being proactive, we have always prided ourselves on being a proactive community, and, um, as far as, you know, the, what, the cameras you had in 2012, 10 years of technology upgrades has sure come a long way, and I don't see it as an intrusion, I see it as another tool in our toolbox to catch the bad guy. The, Ms. Wright brought up the, the situation of possible immigration, illegal, you know, immigrant, can you tell me, is that going to be used for, for, to contact ICE or anything else?
No, not to my knowledge, that, the current Flock system, so we have something called a hot list, that the state of Michigan has every single day, and when the officer starts to shift, when he logs into Flock, it'll upload the most current version of valid plates that are wanted, a lot of those are really serious felony warrants and wants that are put in, and there might be, I remember when we had our last system, I was running, after we had it installed, I was driving around the city, I actually got a hit, and it came from Department of Homeland Security on a known terrorist, and it was a terrorist hit on this vehicle, and it had the name of the driver that they wanted, it was all in the description, I stopped the car, talked to the guy, it was the guy, and I'm thinking, why does Homeland Security want this known or possible, it said possible terrorist, terrorist link, blah, 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 Department of Homeland Security, and it said, do not detain, just stop an ID, so it had it right there in, in the, the comment section on the state hot list that is uploaded, so all those things have to be vetted out, and, so immigration status, someone's here illegally, that is not one of the reasons that would be put in there.
Okay, um, and does the county have Flock cameras?
Um, Macomb County, I think is moving forward with the program, and Oakland County Sheriff has some parts of their, some cities within their policing boundaries want them.
And what, as far as software updates, how often will that need to be purchased?
Yeah, so the, the interesting thing about Flock, it's $2,500 per camera, and you lease the camera, so it's kind of like leasing a car, if it blows out a strut, a shock, a windshield wiper, it's covered, so you just pay for the camera, and you don't have to worry about it, if the camera's down, doesn't operate, software updates, Flock just fixes it, it's just covered, just like a lease car.
And where do you lease your cars from, chief?
Uh, yeah, I don't lease though, I, I, yeah.
I don't think that's how leased cars work.
Yeah, well, you're right, I guess, I guess, normal wear and tear, if something happens in your leased car, hopefully it's warranted, a warranted item.
Understood. Mrs. Schmidt, sorry.
So it's $2,500 a year?
Yes.
And we're funding that with forfeiture funds?
Yes, narcotics forfeiture funds.
So it's not coming out of our budget, it's coming out of the forfeiture funds?
That is correct.
Okay, um, so I, I'm on board with it, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, I think the, what it's utilized for will keep our community safer, and I'm, I'm all for it. And lastly, chief, this really is something I would like to explore, our school resource officers, so in the Warren Consolidated School District, we have one school resource officer, he covers Sterling Heights High School, however, I know for a fact that he also covers two other high schools in our community, Community High at Hatherley, Career Prep, and he covers Grissom and Carlton, the two middle schools. The Warren Police Department actually have two school resource officers funded, one that is housed at Cusno High School, and one that's housed at Mott High School, so I think, you know, they, Warren also has two middle schools, they have Carter and Beer, I think that it would only be fair that we approached the school district in funding a second school resource officer, and I know that Officer Campo has been doing a phenomenal job, I've had meetings with the, the principal over at Sterling on different matters, and he said he's been priceless to him, especially after the Oxford situation, and that Officer Campo has been working all hours of the day and evenings, following up on, on threats. The school environment now has totally changed, and I think that if Warren has two officers funded, they have two high schools, we have three high schools in Sterling Heights, I think it's the least that they can do, is make sure that we have significant or enough coverage for all of the schools that are in our community as well, so that's a conversation I'm going to charge you and Mr. Vanderpoel with, to speak with Dr. Louvenoy possibly, in having that happen, and then, you know, when school is out, those officers become our park officers, or, you know, bike patrol, or, you know, it's, it's two more feet on the ground, so, so that's a challenge for, for the two of you, and it's not for this budget, it's for the future, and I probably should have brought that up in strategic planning, but I'm bringing it up tonight, so with that, chief, I think I am done with you. Mrs. Varney, while you're sitting there, and while Chief Edmonds is coming up to the chair, the monthly water bills, so I have residents that are concerned that with the quarterly water bills, there was an administrative fee, so can you tell me, is that going to be divided monthly now, or are they going to be charged the same fee every month that they were charged quarterly?
Ms. Varney.
Yeah, the quarterly fee that's in the appropriations ordinance is actually monthly, so yeah, you're, what, you paid for a quarter, now you'll divide that by three and pay a third of it each month.
Perfect, perfect. Chief Edmonds, just a couple of comments, you had brought up, now that we're getting back to normal, and to, you know, after COVID, that we're going to be starting CPR certifications for residents, or recertifications, can you tell me, is there a game plan as to how often that's going to be offered to our residents?
Not at this time, it's something that we're developing, that we'll be rolling out this summer.
Okay, great, because I, actually, I'm a CPR instructor at Warren Con, and I have former students contacting me, wanting to be recertified, and I can't do that in my building, but I'm going to have them contact the fire department, and hopefully we'll be able to help some of those folks out. And also, as far as the farm team, coming from a, a building that certifies, state certifies some EMTs, I think it's a great, great program, you know, a lot of our firefighters came from Universal Ambulance or other ambulance companies, and are now paramedic firefighters, so I think to give them the opportunity to get a taste, so to speak, the hook, I think is a wonderful opportunity, and I appreciate the thought of, of doing that. And as far as the knockbox, since Ms. Davis is here from community relations, my thought is, maybe we can have Marissa do one of her flash videos on the knockbox, or, you know, we, we do a lot of so, social media, you know, promotions, and a lot of people follow Facebook, the older people are on Facebook, so I think, you know, I think that it's a great place, not just on the website, but there's a lot of things we could do. And that's it for you, chief?
Uh, just a follow-up on the lockbox. Did some research real quick on downtime, council, it's about $28 plus shipping and handling, and we do have a video that's on the website for the lockboxes, but we'll do a better job of trying to get it out through Facebook and some other social media platforms.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure we have a department that can help. And after that, Mr. Moore. So just a quick question, because Mrs. Kosky brought it up, and I already had it written down, the fire hydrant painting.
Sure.
So I have a fire hydrant, and I can't remember it ever being painted, have we ever considered an adopt-a-hydrant program, or a program where, let's say, the Schmidt household can come to the DPW and get all the supplies to paint their fire hydrant, to help?
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, we, but you bring up, the, the biggest point is, we would have to supply the material, because it is reflective paint.
Right.
Difficult to find, so I think it's a great idea that we can explore.
Okay, and as far as the tree pruning, I know it's devastating when everyone sees their trees, however, I think our tree pruners do a heck of a lot better than the DTE tree pruners, who hallow out the insides of trees to go around lines, and I can say that, you know, we have property up north, and when they come and clear-cut on their right-aways, it's devastating, but it does grow back, it, it just takes a couple of years, and, you know, I'm glad that we stick to a standard, so, other than that, I want to thank everyone once again for all their hard work in this budget, and on a final note, unfortunately, I have a commitment, next Wed, next Wednesday, I will be out of town at a conference that I actually helped to organize, and it was scheduled before Warren Con decided to have something on the ballot, and our meeting would be moved, so I am unable to be here for the adoption of the ba, the budget, but I wanted to be put on record that I am in full support of tonight's budget, so, thank you, Mayor Taylor.
Okay, thank you very much, good discussion tonight, thank you, Mr. Moore, Ms. Varney, Chief Wojcickowski, Chief Edmonds, for your presentations. Chief Wojcicki, Chief Edmonds, for your presentations. Those are always very informative. A lot of great discussion and conversation and questions by my colleagues. I'm going to keep an open mind on the Flock system. I would like to know more about it when it does eventually come back to the city council, and I think I'll reserve any further comment. Until then, all of you are doing a great job. Thank you for your work on this budget. Please keep up the good work, and our residents really appreciate everything that these departments do for our city. So with that...
Mr. Mayor, I have a few more questions if I could.
A few more? How about two more?
I think I've got two more, exactly.
Okay, two more.
Through the chair to Chief of Police, Mr. Wojcicki. While some of my colleagues were discussing things here, I was looking at the Flock camera system on their website, and two things jumped out at me that I want to be very clear about. It says not only can you search by make or color, you can search by bumper sticker or unique feature of the car, like a roof rack or a sticker. So theoretically, we could search for all cars in the city that have Trump bumper stickers, couldn't we? Through the chair to Mr. Wojcicki.
I'm not sure the... I think there's called unique identifiers.
They list bumper stickers as one of the identifiers.
Yeah, so is it a... Just a sticker on a car? I'm not entirely sure if it says the word Trump that would...
No, but we could search that way.
I think it says that there's a sticker on the bumper.
Okay.
Or a rack on the roof.
Well, to go more than that, while I was searching the website while I was sitting here, it says we also can search by associated vehicles. Could you explain a little bit more about that to me?
Associated vehicle may be a plate that is related to a plate that is known or wanted, that this other plate of the bad vehicle owner owns this other vehicle. I'm only guessing what the websites...
As I understand it from the website, it would be a car that was seen in the vicinity of another car several times through the machine learning process. So I just wanted to be very clear. This dragnet, this legalized dragnet, would not only impact a car, say, a gray car, say, a gray Toyota or whatever, it would potentially impact any car that was seen in the vicinity of that gray Toyota over the last 30 days. So not only are we jumping one, we're jumping two. If you believe in six degrees of separation, which scientists have proven does exist, it's not too hard to get yourself caught up into a police investigation. I know our offices, officers in Sterling Heights are very diligent, but I just think that when you legalize a dragnet, essentially, people do get caught up in it that have nothing to do with it, and that could potentially lead to outcomes that are undesirable. While I was sitting here thinking, I know that we are being sued by... I don't know if it's a resident, but someone who was pulled over by our officers because their license plate came up as stolen, and it was actually improperly inputted by the Detroit Police Department, and we pulled them over and arrested them for driving their legal car on the street in Sterling Heights. With this license plate reader camera, I just think these situations are going to increase. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, good. We will move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? If not, I'll close that portion. Reports from city administration, anything tonight, Mr. Vanderpoel?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Mr. Kachubski?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Council, anything else? Reports? None, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, support.
Been moved and supported. With no discussion, I'll on fateful signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you again to all of our department heads. Thank you to the residents participating in this budget session and watching at home. Meeting is adjourned.